Good evening. We're going to call the March 5, 2024 regular Town Council meeting to order. Town Clerk? Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
He will not be making it this evening.
She's running just a minute late.
Okay, shall we rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is our public hearing. We can't hear you, can you? You may have to bring it closer and make sure it's turned on. I can't. You may have to speak right into it.
Right. Is that better? Town of Groton Notice of Public Hearing for Groton High School, March 5, 2024. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Groton Town Council on March 5, 2024 at 6:30 p.m. to solicit comments on the sale of public property specifically to Fort Drumon Monument Street, the former Groton Heights School property. Comments can be given in person at the Groton Town Hall Annex at 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton at the Town Hall Annex, or via Zoom by registering in advance via email at council@grotonct.gov. For those that cannot attend the meeting, comments can be submitted in writing to the Town Manager's Office or via email to towncouncil@grotonct.gov dated at Groton, Connecticut this 15th day of February, 2024. Marisol Melendez, Groton Town Clerk.
Thank you. Town Manager, do we have anybody online? No. So first up, we have Barbara Nagy.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Barbara Nagy. I live at 201 Broad Street in Groton, about a half a mile from the Groton Heights School. I am in favor of selling or giving the building to a qualified developer with the stipulation that the core school building must remain and its exterior appearance must be preserved. The Groton Heights School is an important part of the fabric of the neighborhood and is hopefully sturdy enough to have withstood the damage caused since its closure. The building is beautiful and historic. It was a gift to the town from Frederick Bill, and he spent lavishly to make sure it was the best school possible. He lived in the neighborhood and, incidentally, is buried next to the school behind Bill Memorial Library. The school was designed by Dudley St. Clair Donnelly, a New London architect who was born in Barbados, grew up in Yonkers, and came here in the 1890s as a draftsman to work on the Winthrop School in New London. Donnelly designed well over 50 important buildings in southeastern Connecticut from the 1890s through the 1920s, including the Duarte and Mannwaring Buildings in downtown New London and four buildings at Connecticut College. Clients for his dozens of houses ranged from Walter S. Gard, who built the Gard Theater, to Hugo Momm, the superintendent of the New London Ship and Engine Company in Groton, later Electric Boat. His commissions also included at least nine buildings for Industrialist Morton Plant in Groton, New London, and Florida. In Groton, his projects included the Tyler Building at Eastern Point Beach, a 1905 addition to the Bill Memorial Library, the Groton Congregational Church, the Groton Heights School, an office building for what later became Electric Boat, several additions to the Griswold Hotel, the Shenacostet Golf Clubhouse, now home to Par Four, and many houses. The drawings for a good number of his buildings are on file at New London Landmarks. The sheet I passed out lists about half the offices, commercial buildings, schools, churches, and houses he is known to have designed, and the list is growing as interest in Donnelly increases, more records become available online, and we learn more about him. The Groton Heights School is one of the last and best remaining examples of Donnelly's school designs. Please do write by our community. Make sure it's saved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Offinger?
Good evening, and thank you, as my wife did, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Mark R. Offinger, and for close to 40 years, I've lived at 201 Broad Street, which is within a few minutes of Groton Heights School. I am here this evening to speak in favor of the town disposing, selling, or giving away, if necessary, the property for a viable and appropriate reuse opportunity. I believe the city has in place zoning provisions that could allow for the appropriate adaptive reuse of the current historic building. These three items I want to address or mention to the council. First, it is my opinion, in my opinion, it's imperative that the current historic school structure be retained as part of the property reuse proposal slash development. I would ask the council to make the retention of the historic school structure a requirement of any reuse proposal and that it be called out as such in any reuse solicitation issued by the town. The Groton Heights School structure has been an integral part of the Groton Heights neighborhood for over 110 years. It was designed, as the previous speaker noted, by Dudley St. Clair Donnelly, a renowned regionally significant architect. Other buildings in Groton he designed, and most folks don't even know this, I don't believe, include the Quonic Bridge School, which is where Social Services is located, which is the building Social Services is located in Groton Town Hall, Shenacostet Clubhouse Building, where Par Four is, the Bill Memorial Library, and the Groton Congregational Church, to name a few. Mr. Donnelly was a close associate of Morton Plant and was also the architect of many of Mr. Plant's buildings, both in Groton and Florida, including the former Griswold Hotel that was located at Eastern Point. Second item, as some of you may know, when the school was operated by the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed had a zero-cost arrangement with the Bill Memorial Library to use a portion of the library's property that fronts on Smith Street, not the Monument Street side, the Smith Street side, as part of the school's playground area. To the casual observer, the playground appears to be part of the school property, but it is not. The Bill Memorial Library, and I want to make clear that I am a board member of the Bill Memorial Library, has indicated to the town that it would be willing to trade or exchange the land that they have allowed the Board of Ed to use for playground purposes for the finger of land that is currently part of the school property that fronts on Monument Street, between the library property and the Groton Monument property, essentially between the two four-foot-high cyclone fences that are out there now. I would encourage a town to either make or agree to exchange this land now, prior to issuing a reuse solicitation. If I was the town, or for that matter, if I was a developer, the last thing I would want to see is a third party, that third party being the library, having this type of leverage or control over a potential transaction. It would be to everybody's interest, the town, Bill Memorial, and the potential developer, to work out the details sooner as opposed to later. Lastly, I would encourage a town to establish a reuse advisory committee, you can call it what you will, to provide input to town staff and the town council concerning the proposals that are received. I'm not suggesting they have a vote, just input, observation input. Having local input and knowledge of the process could be of great assistance when it comes to gaining local land use approvals and neighborhood acceptance. Again, thank you for this opportunity to provide my comments.
Thank you. Jim Streeter?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. My name is James Streeter. I reside at 64 Pleasant Street in the City of Groton, District of the Town of Groton. For purposes of full disclosure, I'll advise you that I am vice chairman and member of the City of Groton's Planning and Zoning Commission. I am also the appointed historian for the Town of Groton. I'm here tonight to relay my thoughts about the reuse of the Groton Heights School in the City of Groton. The school, which has been in existence for over 112 years, is situated in one of the Town of Groton's most historical areas. Since its beginning, the school has been characteristically compatible with the surrounding homes and historical landmarks in the area, including the Bill Memorial Library and the Fort Grizzle Park and Museum. I definitely do not desire to have the building torn down. Unfortunately, since its closure over 12 years ago, the town has, in my opinion, willfully neglected to provide the necessary upkeep and maintenance to the building. This has resulted in the building needing major environmental remediation. The building itself is structurally strong and can, with a proper attention, be refurbished and restored for optional use. With that being said, I think the town has a responsibility to contribute to the remediation cost of the building so it can be sold at a reasonable price rather than an almost giveaway price. Although I have heard that a questionnaire was sent to residents in the area asking their thoughts about suggestions for potential reuse of the property, I understand there was little response. I would therefore respectfully suggest that before any request for proposals be solicited, that the town, through its Economic Development Department, have a meeting with the residents in the neighborhood surrounding the school to personally listen to their ideas firsthand as to what they, not the town, thinks would be best for their neighborhood. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Jason Rusk?
Evening, Council, Madam Mayor, Jason Rusk, 85 Baker Avenue, Groton, Connecticut. I'm also a member of the Bill Memorial Library Trustees, and I just wanted to add my voice to those in favor of repurposing the Groton High School property. I commend the council for taking this action. The bill, as the major budding neighbor, has interest in maintaining reuse of the original school building, of course, for its historic and architectural significance. And we were also interested in going forward with the land swap with the town, as previously stated, in parallel with or in advance of transfer of the property to any developer. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Keith Hendrick?
I'm Keith Hendrick. I live at 156 Shenacostet Parkway, and for full disclosure, I am the City of Groton mayor. I'm in favor of the town placing Groton Heights back on the tax rolls. I support the development of this site, whether it's high-tech commercials similar to Fairmahan or if it's residential. This is an opportunity to enhance the neighborhood with an improved building. This can also support the expansion of Electric Boat Shipyard, if used for residential. I also support the land swap with the Bill Memorial Library to be conducted as soon as possible. So, thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you. Mike Boucher?
Mike Boucher, 16 Hillside Avenue. I agree with the many comments and letters about the high-density housing and the lack of open space and parks in the western end of Groton. Recently, the City of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission attempted to rezone 58 acres to support six-story apartment buildings. Colonel Ledgird School is approved for apartments, so is William Sealy School. Groton Heights has interest by developers for apartments also. I wish to see a minimal amount of redevelopment at the Groton Heights school site, preferably just the original school building, no additional buildings, and as much open space as possible. I am very concerned to see the trend of the more diverse closed school sites converted for apartments and the less diverse school sites favored for parks and open space. While I applaud the efforts of neighbors to fight for open space, please remember to treat the western part of town equally and consistent, and allow us to have the same amount of open space considerations in the City of Groton and the western end of Groton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Zuliani?
My name is Robert Zuliani. I live at 23 Cushman Street. I am also a lucky member to be a member of the Board of Trustees of the Bill Memorial Library. I've always preached the three libraries in the Town of Groton are really the solid part of the community. They represent the learning and the development of Groton in itself. It's basically the structure of our society here at Groton. I too have an interest in the land swap issue that we're all interested in. As Mark Offinger pointed out, we have part of the school playground, but the town also has a part of real estate, paralleled alongside the library itself on the right side, and they're equal in size. Basically, they're perfectly ideal to just swap. Whether the developer does it or the town, it's not important to the library. We'd just like to have that accomplished. We would prefer to do it through the town because it'd be quicker and faster, could probably be arranged before even a developer is put in place. In general, everybody will benefit from this gain going forward, developing a land, possibly doing a land swap. The community will capitalize tremendously, and I thank you for all the work you do and appreciate your cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for the Groton Heights property?
My name is Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive. Full disclosure, I am a member of the Board of Education, but I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen. In regards to Groton Heights, I am in favor of the project going forward as far as getting the property back on the tax rolls in some form or fashion, making it open for developers to submit RFPs. I would just encourage, I'm also in favor of the land swap idea, but I would encourage that the deal be written in such a way that it allows for the town to have an opportunity to purchase the property should the library ever decide to sell it. It is, I'm also in favor of the idea that we should preserve the structure as much as possible. It is a historic building, and it looks great up there, and I'd be really eager to see something develop. I also want to take note of Mr. Offinger's comments as far as forming a committee that has some citizens and residents involved with it. That idea was put before this council last year with a property reuse document. That was the 2023 draft of the town-owned property evaluation document, which was resoundly and unceremoniously discharged by the previous council that sat here. So perhaps it's time to take another look at that document and see what can be salvaged out of that and brought forward to incorporate Mr. Offinger's ideas about having residents involved in these decision-making processes and as they review, now, maybe not a vote, but at least some sort of commentary that would be officially part of the record. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on the Groton Heights public hearing?
Brian Nieman, 76 Allen Street in the city. Groton Heights has been a landmark in that area since I moved there in 1960. I went there from kindergarten through sixth grade when it was that length of time. I would also like to see a development of some kind there, but I would like to keep the original character of the building as much as possible. We've recently lost a historic structure over New London. Those buildings cannot be replaced. Something built around 1903 or 1909, whenever it was built, those were built structurally sound, and to do that today is usually financially not worth it to most developers. So if you can preserve a building of that stature for the future generations, it would be greatly appreciated by many. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
My name is, excuse me, is Ann Doyle. I live at 94 Smith Street, which is directly opposite from the back of the school, that is to say, the not-so-attractive side of the school. I am very much in favor of historic preservation. I love all of the character of the buildings that are in our neighborhood. On the other hand, it's not necessarily always possible. We're not talking about a homeowner that wants to buy an historic home and possibly raise it, and we're talking about trying to encourage someone else to come and take on a property that is not currently on the tax roll and is disintegrating, and we can't force somebody to put the cost into renovating such a building. So although my first choice would have been to have Fairmahan go forward with what was a really beautiful proposal, they chose to do something different, and that was their So, you know, if we could get someone in there to turn what is currently increasingly unattractive, well, it's not an unattractive building, but it's disintegrating, and every time I walk my dog over there, we have to tiptoe around the broken glass. So basically, my top priority is seeing something that is well-designed and does not greatly increase the traffic in the neighborhood. I set my watch to 2:38, and I look up, and there's a steady stream of traffic from electric boat, and I have to leave the yard to go into the house because it's loud and overwhelming, and I'd just, I'd rather not add drastically to the traffic by whatever goes in there. So that is my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Okay. Okay, so it is 6:57, and we'll close the public comment portion of Groton Heights. I would also like to note that we did receive letters as a council from the Bill Memorial Library Board of Trustees, Ms. Janet Downs, as well as Patricia and Fred Broome of Spicer Avenue regarding this building as well. So thank you. Next up, Clerk?
Town of Groton Notice of Public Hearing for Former Pleasant Valley School, March 5, 2024. Notice is given that a public hearing will be held by the Groton Town Council on March 5, 2024 at 6:30 p.m. to solicit comments on the sale of public property, specifically 380 Pleasant Valley Road South, the former Pleasant Valley School property. Comments can be given in person at the Groton Town Hall Annex at 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton at the Town Hall Annex, or via Zoom by registering in advance via email at council@grotonct.gov. For those that cannot attend the meeting, comments can be submitted in writing to the Town Manager's Office or via email to towncouncil@grotonct.gov dated at Groton, sorry, dated at Groton, Connecticut this 15th day of February, 2024. Marisol Melendez, Town, Groton Town Clerk.
Thank you. I'd also like to note that Council Parker is here, and she arrived at 6:36. So first up for Pleasant Valley would be Sean Powers.
My name is Sean Powers. I live at 298 Lester Town Road. I'm an RTM member, and I represent the 4th District, which is where the school is located. I have an executive summary, which is, it reexamines our 2021 Commission study on housing needs for our town. The study basically says in its updated information form that the demand for housing went from 5,200 units to 6,450 units, and apartment vacancy, for those that don't know it, is 2.3, which is extremely low. And meanwhile, while the housing industry itself in town, the market value of homes went from about $270,000 all the way up to $350,000, and we're behind quite extensively in the region as far as the demographics of what the economic trends are for our area. I could go on for, you know, another two hours and tell you what's really going on in southeastern Connecticut because I'm a Realtor as well as a property manager. The potential growth here is, it's growing at a very rapid pace, and so just rents alone go from, they went up 19% from about $1,329 to $1,632. And I really believe that the needs that we have in our community are not going to continue to be met in all southeastern Connecticut because of the way the land is. We're very fortunate to have the town properties that we have in order to redevelop and to actually put people in our community and grow our community. We've spent extensive amounts of money with our education budget, with We've spent extensive amounts of money with our education budget, with putting out new schools. We have a lot of good work that's been done by the economic and community development people in our, in our town hall here. The council has brought these properties forward for us to look at as a whole, our community. I live next to Fairview. They're before the planning zoning department and zoning board of appeals for another 240 units to go in for elderly care. It's going, it's a continuing care facility, which basically says they have nursing care, they have assisted living, and they have independent living. So we're really in a very good spot, but we need to continue to grow. And if we just let these buildings sit vacant, they haven't been put on the tax rolls, and I, I'm a firm believer that all of the schools that we have, we need to do something with, and we need to generate income in order to keep our tax base balanced and to supply the needs that we have, the boat in the subbase, electric boat, and Pfizer's that are here. So I'll leave my comments at that. I recommend that everybody in town get a hold of this executive summary, read through it, and understand what the real needs are for our community. I thank the town council for all the work they did, Manager Vert as well, and I hope we continue to grow as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Olson.
Good evening. Tom Olson, I'm representing the Conservation Commission. I live at 188 Crosswinds Drive. Back in March 4th of 2021, the Conservation Commission reviewed the Pleasant Valley RFP that was issued, because we weren't asked to provide any comments beforehand, but we did make comments back to the town manager, and I'd like to read those just in the record here. At the February 23rd, 2021 Town Council meeting, the council scheduled a public hearing on the subject property of Pleasant Valley School. The Conservation Commission has reviewed the property and supports the town's efforts to put the Pleasant Valley School property on the market for redevelopment. The area directly around the school property is highly commercially developable and includes many housing developments close to the property. In addition to the property, has full utilities available, which will enable development. Our reasoning is that this property does not build on the Commission's Greenway Conservation Plan, and the property has a low open space economic value. Its open space value is calculated by the Commission ranks low, eighth out of nine of the properties considered by the town for redevelopment. However, with over eight acres of forest canopy on the back portion of the property, any future development of the property should be carbon neutral to the town. This means saving as many mature trees as possible and offsetting plantings of trees within the town to help with carbon balance and reducing effects on climate change. And signed Larry Dunn as the chairman. Larry is still the chairman. We reviewed this letter last night at our Conservation Commission meeting and feel that it's still valid as written. We would also, we did identify some additional concerns here relative that, you know, from a commercial development perspective, we fully support it. We need to have some development and going forward, whether it's a teardown or whatever, but there should be some consideration put into the RFP upfront to save the trees in a slope that are, that is available. And there's, the maps I'll provide here indicate both the topography as well as the current tree coverage, and that's what we're trying to, if that could be subdivided out or conservation easement put on that, there should be some, in the RFP process, development to put those considerations into it rather than just wholesale. It's a parcel, we're not going to do anything with it. I think there are opportunities here from the Conservation Commission that we can, we working with you in regard to what opportunities are out there to modify the parcel in regard to keeping its ecological values to the maximum. In a likewise, we also, we made no comment on the Groton Heights property, but we did also recognize that you have a, in your prioritization, number nine here for your, for your goals for the year of the 13, number nine was taking a look at open space. This also can, goes, we're not, this is a type of parcel that would not, we would not be recommending for an open space conversion, but we will come back to you probably in the July or August timeframe with an update as far as on where we are with the open space conservation plan that we, that was briefed to the town council back in December of 2020. So it's been four years now. We'll come in and provide an update in response to your prioritization and requests for that is how this fits in there also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hugh Barton.
I'm Hugh Barton. I live on Hartwell Drive, which is right off of Pleasant Valley, South Pleasant Valley, about a block from the school building. I sent written comments. I'm not going to read all of that to you. I hope you will read it. I just want to make a few points. I do support development at that site, and I think that development can be sensitive to providing some open space, maintaining some of the woods, as you were just hearing about. There's also another written comment where the commenter suggested potentially developing a playground area in a small portion of that site. I would, I looked at the Groton GIS map today, and, you know, it's really clear that the green space on that map is east of Route 117 and Poconoc River, and there's very, the bulk, and there's relatively little on the west side of town. So I'm not suggesting that this whole site should not be developed, but I think the some sensitivity around, you know, the potential for some open space in the woods, the playground, makes sense. I also think it's important that the town think about the interface between business and residence. For South Pleasant Valley, that's the east side of the road and the west side of the road. The east side of the road are business properties that run through the Route 12, that face Route 12, and South Pleasant Valley on that side is basically an eyesore. The town hasn't been paying attention, and it should. It's directly across from the site that you're trying to have developed. So addressing the interface between the business properties, you know, in whatever way, I don't know what's legally allowable, what the town can do by persuasion, but I think it's something you could improve the development interest in that by doing. I think short-term rentals should not be allowed legally if housing is developed there. The point is to develop housing for all the job growth that's going on around here, and which many people in this town don't want to acknowledge, that the reason that housing prices are going up is partly because there is not new housing being developed. So I think it's appropriate for the town to have a goal to develop housing and to explicitly legally exclude short-term rentals in those housing. That's not the point of developing that housing. And the last thing I'll say is to reiterate something that somebody else said, and I've sort of said earlier, which is, you know, we all come to talk about the properties in our neighborhood, but we need to have some vision for the town as a whole that balances what's going on, you know, on the more developed western side of town that has a lot of the economy of this town, that doesn't have the green space, that's on the eastern side where those, where I lived in Mystic for 15 years. I just moved a few months ago. Because the only one-story house I saw in three months of looking in Groton was the house that I bought, and I love it. But I almost moved to East Line because there were more one-story houses there built in the 60s. So anyway, I think you need to think as town council about when you hear from the neighbors, are you hearing from the rest of the town? Is the rest of the town, you know, saying anything about the development that's being proposed? It costs money to have parks developed, to tear down buildings, to remediate environmental situations from those buildings, and we all pay for that. Not just, but the benefits tend to be relatively more local to that part of town. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Scott Westervelt. Beatrice Mills.
Mayor Franco, members of the town council, my name is Beatrice Mills. I grew up at 36 Church Street in Groton, which is coincidentally between the two properties being discussed tonight, both of which painted parts of my childhood, but I'd like to thank you for specifically speaking with regards to the development of the Pleasant Valley Elementary School tonight. On behalf of the Groton Conservation Advocates, I'm speaking tonight to echo some of the sentiments you've heard earlier and to bring your attention to the trees on the Pleasant Valley School property now that the town is planning to sell the property to a developer. From the property maps, you can clearly see that there are many trees on the property. In fact, 52.2% of the town property is covered by trees, some of which are quite mature. We urge the town not to sell the portion of the property that is forested, but rather to preserve it as it is much-needed open space to the west end of Groton, which, as you've heard, is lacking. Most of the trees in the small forest are located outside the fenced school perimeter on a hillside rising up to the Navy Development west of the property. There are many tall native sugar maples, varieties of oak growing there, hickory, black cherry were spotted there, too. There's grapevines, wineberry, blackberry, raspberry, multiflora rosa, all growing near the paved path that connects the school and the Navy Housing Development. Unfortunately, there's also heavy invasive bittersweet growing up the tree trunks along the path, which will need to be removed in the process. There are several full-grown trees within the front school perimeter, so we've talked about outside of the fence perimeter, now we're talking about inside the fence perimeter. There's Norway maple trees, considered invasive because they outcompete sugar maples, white pines, blue spruce, pin oak and other oak varieties, black cherry, red cedar, and I could go on. But why protect these trees? Well, as the biggest plants on the planet, they give us oxygen, store carbon, stabilize the soil, and provide shelter and food to local and transient wildlife. They reduce wind speeds, cool the air as they lose moisture, and reflect heat upwards from their leaves. It's estimated that trees can reduce the temperature in urban area by up to 12.5 degrees Fahrenheit. The west side of Groton is a heavily urbanized area, though we've heard it's heavily commercialized as well, and it desperately needs more trees to reduce heat in a warming climate and to provide recreational space for the people who live there, especially ones that will be moving in in the near future. Trees also help prevent flooding and soil erosion, and they absorb hundreds of gallons of stormwater. One mature oak can be as home, can be home to as many as 500 different species. People are attracted to live, work, and invest in green surroundings. Research showing that average housing prices are 5 to 18% higher when properties are close to mature trees. Why not cut the Pleasant Valley School trees down and plant trees somewhere else in Groton as compensation? Because newly planted trees require many decades to a century before they can sequester carbon dioxide in substantial quantities. We hope that the town and the chosen developer will take these facts into serious consideration and opt to redevelop only those areas that are already developed. There are some beautiful trees within the boundaries of the school that could be preserved to make the development more attractive. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on Pleasant Valley School?
Lauren Gothier, 31 Bortson Road. I'm a former RTM member for District 4 where Pleasant Valley is located, and I've spoken with this council and previous councils previously in favor of preserving a portion of Pleasant Valley for a public playground or park. And I did submit comments earlier, so I'm not going to reiterate those, but Mr. Vert, if you could pull up that map that you just had from Ms. Mills. I'd really like to emphasize a few things. I think there's a middle ground that can be reached here. You know, the western half of the town is, as stated, pretty developed, but unfortunately that means the neighborhood, the very family neighborhood that Pleasant Valley is in, we don't have a lot of recreation space. Pleasant Valley beforehand, before the playground equipment was removed, was kind of where we would go, or else William Sealy, William Sealy is having those apartments put up right now. They're going up so quickly, and I personally live about half mile between both schools. And of course, Mary Morrison, the Board of Ed is, is hanging on, too. But anyways, if we look at this, this property map here, and if you visit, I encourage you if you haven't been to the physical property yet, it's very apparent how easily it would be and how economically sound it would be for the town to retain that southern portion where you already have blacktop, you have some garden boxes. There was a slide and some swings. I'm not sure how much of that is left. I don't think any. But it's all, it's already cleared, flat, there's drainage, there's access to the road, there's access to sewer, to utilities. It'd be very easy for the town to kind of lop off that southern portion without significantly damaging the commercial value to a developer. Half an acre, an acre, you could keep some of that forested land, too. And given the high demand that's been reported by town staff for this property, I would imagine it would fetch a very good price. Like I said, it's, it's pretty flat. It's already has access to sidewalks, a main road, sewer, utilities. This property should go for a very good price, and hopefully to a great developer who will do right by this neighborhood. And so I think it's only reasonable for the town to address the equity problems that we're having where there's not enough town-owned recreation in District 4 in the western end. We have open space at Cops Park, which is great, but specifically a playground. I have to trek the other side of town to get something like Paquonic Plains right here. Claude Chester went immediately to Fields to, to address the athletic fields and playground space, even though it's directly next to Paquonic Plains, which is, of course, a giant Fields complex. So it would be nice to see all of Pleasant Valley retained for recreational open space maintained by the town. That's a really important point. There are pockets playgrounds around by some of the other neighborhood developments, but they aren't available to town residents that aren't part of those developments. It's really unfortunate. We saw, we were able to use them, nobody really said anything. COVID hit, they shut all the playgrounds down, and since then, signs have gone up saying pretty much you can't come in here, and it's made myself nervous to go and have anything happen. So it'd be really great for the town to hang on to them. That way, the citizens can have a chance to say what kind of equipment we want to go there. We have someone to give a redress to if conditions start to fail, that kind of thing. Plus, it would give another opportunity for, for the town to put on any kind of recreational amendments they want. But just to kind of conclude, I think there's a way that everyone can get what they need out of the property in a really fair and kind of economical way. Because again, the, the sale of this should be able to pay for playground equipment, and it definitely beats trying to go buy another parcel somewhere else at market value and then put in an access road, put in sewer water utilities. It just doesn't make sense to do it that way. I'd say use what we have as smartly as we can, and that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on Pleasant Valley?
Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive, and again, full disclosure, Board of Ed member, but speaking tonight as a private citizen. I'm not going to go into great detail to reiterate the points. I do agree with many of the speakers ahead of me in regards to, I think there is some wisdom in subdivision, preserving the open space to the west of the, of the parcel, and also with the idea of preserving something to the south for use as a playground. As many others have identified, the west side of Groton is incredibly dense and lacking in open space and areas for communal, community play and gathering. So I would just encourage looking at that as a model moving forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? We also received four letters, and those We also received four letters, and those that came to us regarding Pleasant Valley School, and those people have also spoken here this evening. So we will close this portion of public hearing on Pleasant Valley Schools. And we will be moving on to receipt of citizen petition, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or as directed by the mayor, and if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councillors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. All presentations shall be made from the lectern and should include the speaker's name and address for the record. Is there a sheet? Thank you. First up is Ann Hailing.
I'm Ann Hailing, and I live at 158 High Street, and just want to thank you all for serving. This is like a wonderful place to be and takes a lot of volunteer hours for you, so thank you. I'm here to speak about the future of S.B. Butler School, and it kind of seemed to me come out of nowhere, but listening to all the talk about the other schools, I get that it's very much relevant. And I understand it's very much an economic issue for you, actually for all of us in the town, and none of us like to pay more taxes. I do live at High Street now, which is not, was part of the S.B. Butler School community, but I'm not a direct neighbor. However, I've lived in three different houses within a one-mile radius over the last 30-plus years, so I know the community really well, and it is just one very, very large neighborhood. But I'm not here to talk really about being a direct abutter, but more as a public school teacher for over 20 years. The decline of mental health of our kids is alarming, to the point where I recently left public school and am trying something else. And I do think that keeping S.B. Butler School as a multi-age, multi-generational recreational use is going to do more to help the mental health of these kids who are sort of rising in their independence, AKA going through puberty, don't have all their synapses connecting, but want to be out of their parents' eye sight and yet can't drive, which is probably a good thing. And just over the last 30 years I've been here, and still I see kids playing basketball, wall ball, practicing their, you know, baseball games. And having gone through COVID and hearing kids without the ability to get outside and play, the kids that were most at risk for me were my true, like, scholar athlete, go-in places, mostly eighth-grade boys, who I would hear through their online school, whatever we were doing with our Zoom and all that, saying, "I can't believe this. I have no future. I can only play ball with my eight-year-old sister." And just the need to get out and have a place to go. The S.B. Butler community is really big. It was set over 200 years ago in that area. It's a bucolic setting, and it pulls from the north, southeast, and west. It's not really on a major road. It's a huge neighborhood, and I think it's really important to keep that gathering space for the mental health or well-being, which truly is scary. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Riley.
Can I just submit a letter?
Sure. Kathy Hendrickson.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Hendrickson. I live at 110 Windwood Way. I grew up attending Groton Heights and moved from the city of Groton to the town of Groton, and my kids all attended S.B. Butler. It was a wonderful, small neighborhood school, wonderful neighborhood for families and children. And like Ann said, it did draw from many neighborhoods, not just right around the school. But we were very blessed to have a small community school, and our kids all thrived because of it. And we have many wonderful family connections with the children, who are all best friends now, and the families that live there. But I support Ann Hailing's suggestion of keeping it like for a multi-use recreational, rather than having a developer come in with many units or many housing units to a small neighborhood community that, again, would, I understand the tax base, you know, for the town of Groton, but it would, we've seen it happen to many communities, and I know we've lost a lot of small neighborhood schools, but I would be in favor of seeing some type of a multi-use space, if possible, for the neighborhood community, if possible, as opposed to having a developer come in and having a lot more traffic come into that small area. So thank you.
Thank you. Liz Rezbek.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Town Council. Takes me a while for my voice to crank up. My name's Elizabeth Rezbek. I live at 81 Main Street, and I'm co-chair of Groton Conservation Advocates. I wanted to build on our testimony in the hearing about the Pleasant Valley School and talk to you a little bit about another reason we need to protect trees and open space, and that is our rising temperatures in Groton, and of course, the whole world. I commend you on Raider Groton website, the report on the Groton Heat Study, which was led by Megan Granato last summer. She's our Sustainability and Resilience Manager. That study shows where our hotspots probably are, which, not surprisingly, are on the west side of town, including Groton City, but extending all the way up to, here, the Navy Yard. These areas appear to be almost as hot as New London and not far behind New Haven. As you move east, the town cools off with another but smaller hotspot in Mystic. This study provides very useful information for the town and our staff to start planning now where and how we need to defend against future rising temperatures. One of the best and cheapest sources of cooler temperatures is mature trees, which can reduce surrounding temperatures by 10 degrees or more. A look at Groton's forest cover shows the west side of town and the city. This is for you, Mr. Mayor, also. The west side and the city have the least forest cover and are in the greatest need of additional tree cover to defend against growing heat. Trees take a long time to grow, but they're cheap. So the easiest thing for the town to do is to take off the table, the sale of forest cover on the land it owns, and to increase forest cover on its own land, especially on the west side. That would include saving pockets of forest on the schools it is planning to sell, as well as other properties. The 50% forest cover on Pleasant Valley School is a great place to start. Once these forest pockets are gone, they're gone forever, making heat mitigation more challenging and expensive. Now, planning and development staff have told me that selling our excess schools and other properties is a way of gaining needed housing, but not sprawling north of I-95, which is good, and I respect that. But I would challenge them to show us that not developing these pocket parts around the city would mean a very significant loss in future housing. Can we afford to wait any longer before defending ourselves with an army of trees? July 4th, 2023 was the hottest day on earth. A million-acre fire is now burning in Texas, which is larger than Rhode Island, spreading fast and only 15% contained. Six of the 10 hottest days in July and seven of the 10 hottest days in August here in Groton have occurred since the year 2000. By 2050, or likely have, 15 to 20 days over 90 degrees. By 2100, there'll be 20 to 54 days over 90 degrees. The historic average, by contrast, is three days. So this is not about preserving more habitat. This is a concern we all should have about our most vulnerable citizens being threatened by rising temperatures. We need to take steps now to lessen the impacts we know are coming. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you. Kristin Stam.
Hi, I'm Kristin Stam. I reside at 182 Bayview Avenue, and I'd like to say thank you very much for hearing my letter. I did submit it earlier, but I'd like to read it for you all. I've lived in Mystic for 20 years, and my husband for even longer. Both my children have attended S.B. Butler School, and they've developed friendships over those years within that school. The property that we're talking about, S.B. Butler, is it's necessary to keep this as a recreational space. At present, the space is used by all young, all young and old, new families, existing families, and their fur babies as well. This property could be used as a community resource, the grounds for, for example, grounds for a community garden. The building could be a community space to host gatherings for those that want to have birthday parties and host things at their homes, or host things at a space that they can't necessarily host at their own home. So that could be like a small rental fee toward the community members, or maybe even a rental fee to a non-community member who wants to use the space because they don't have a space in their area. Could possibly be potential revenue in that space. But for birthday parties, sports events, softball, T-ball, there's the basketball courts. There's many different functions that could happen in this space and that are needed within the community, and not just our immediate community, but extends out. Our downtown is growing, and there is no place for anybody to go. However, the community space is needed. We start taking up the land of what we do have around us, and that land that doesn't get used for community space, get used for housing, then there's no place for anybody to go. Our infrastructure in our neighborhood as well is very, very poor. Our streets are narrow, so, and this has been brought up before, our streets are narrow. Our streets can't support any more traffic as it is, and there's not many places for people to park. Yes, there is parking area in the school, but when you start adding additional traffic, people are already parking on both sides of the street. Again, it becomes a safety hazard when there's an emergency and there's emergency vehicles that have to come through the neighborhoods, and if there's two cars parked on either side of the street, we can't fit through. Bayview Avenue is also, there's areas of that you have to stop to let someone by before you can actually move on your way through the street because the street is so narrow. There's, you know, the infrastructure in that area is very, very small for those streets, and we can't support it. Adding more traffic, adding more housing is not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to sustain it. There's been proposal for a bed and breakfast to be in that area, and when you look at the development, the package that's been provided, that's not a, that's not a bed and breakfast. That's a hotel. In my opinion, that's a hotel. And the definition of a bed and breakfast, if you look it up, I Googled it today, and the bed and breakfast, typically shortened to B&amp;B, is a small lodging establishment that offers overnight accommodations and breakfast. Bed and breakfasts are often private family homes and typically have between four and 11 rooms, with six being average, typically furnished with antiques. S.B. Butler is not a small home. It's a school. It's a place where if someone's going to put in a bed and breakfast there, that's not a bed and breakfast, that's a motel. We can't support that in our neighborhood. How could this design be considered a bed and breakfast? The modern concepts do not fit this area, and the size of the project do not reflect a B&amp;B. Most residents of this area do not want this in their backyards because that's what it is, that there's backyards that abut this property. It's not just a street. It's backyards, it's family homes. Any buildings on this property, any building on this property will increase the traffic load that our current infrastructure has difficulties handling already. There is an empty movie theater in Groton that could certainly handle being converted to a bed and breakfast slash hotel and have ample parking and access to shopping and other amenities, more suited for hotel housing than smack dab in the middle of our neighborhood. Thank you very much for listening to my concerns, and hopefully I believe that there is more concerns in our neighborhoods as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick clarification from the mayor. May I just have the speaker's name because I missed it, went off in my notes?
Kristin Stam.
Stam.
Stam. S-B-A-M.
Thank you.
You will see a letter in your packet at your desk from our two-year-old.
Thank you.
Liz Bala. Not sure if I'm saying that correctly.
It's Bylik.
Bylik. Sorry.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Liz Bylik. I'm from 172 Bayview Avenue in Mystic. I spoke at the last meeting in opposition to any development of the S.B. Butler property. I basically just want to reiterate that I frankly think it's unfair to residents who have lived there for decades and to any new residents who choose to purchase a home in this peaceful area. I think it should be maintained by the town as open space. If it gets sold, you know, us as, you guys as the town and us as the residents don't really have a say as to what happens, you know, if the guy goes, if the developer goes bankrupt, if it has to be sold to somebody else, you know, all those kind of decisions, and what happens is basically out of our hands. Like Krista and I heard about the proposal of the, AKA, bed and breakfast hotel that's being proposed, and part of that proposal was to keep some of the space as a park for kids and maybe grow some wildflowers and have a walking path. I just kind of find that really, you know, for lack of a better word, kind of just strange. Like, I don't see myself driving to a hotel or a bed and breakfast to use that space for my family and grandkids, neighbors, unless I'm a guest of that hotel. And I just feel like at any time, they could turn around and say, "This is only for guests that are paying to stay here." I also think that any development isn't really looking out for the best interests of the neighborhood and the taxpayers. They're ultimately looking to line their own pockets. So I would urge you to please look out for the current residents and future generations of families and to not sell off this space to, you know, potentially bring in a revolving door of unknown potential issues to our wonderful neighborhood. Then I would also like to read a letter on behalf of my neighbor who couldn't be here this evening. She resides at 162 Bayview Avenue. Her name is Lynn O'Brien. She says, "Good evening, Mayor and members of the Groton Town Council. My name is Lynn O'Brien. I live at 162 Bayview Avenue, Mystic, Connecticut. I have lived in Mystic approximately 37 years, and I have been a resident of Groton for the majority of my life. I am strongly invested in the well-being of our community. The S.B. Butler property is now being considered for reuse. I am strongly opposed to the private sale of this property, and I feel it would be best served by remaining as a community resource. It is important that a neighborhood..." It is important that a neighborhood has a multi-use recreational park within walking or biking distance from our homes. The only way to ensure the neighborhood has a park and green space area long term is to have it owned by the Town of Groton. In the current proposal suggested by Robert," I'm going to mess up his last name, Diagnostino, "there is no guarantee for a long-term park or large green space area at all. Once it goes to private ownership, promises do not have to be kept. If he incurred financial difficulties, the maintenance to the small park he proposes would not be a priority for him to maintain. His proposal for a small park and private ownership does not solve the problem for our neighborhood's needs for a large recreational slash green space area. I propose the property remain for community use as a recreational and green space area and should be owned by the Town of Groton. Please, we implore you, do not take this precious recreational area away from us. Instead, let it remain a vital part of our neighborhood. It will only help to enhance or maintain our property values as well as improve the health and lives of the local residents. Thank you for your time and consideration of this request. Sincerely, Lynn O'Brien, 162 Bayview Avenue, Mystic."
Thank you all. Thank you. Up next, Michael Boucher.
Mike Boucher, 16 Hillside Avenue, Groton. I'm very concerned about the significant increase of costs concerning the Shore Avenue Seawall in the city of Groton. It's about 350 feet long. Originally, the estimate was 2.7 million, which was going to come from the state, and I believe from the articles, the town was going to kick in 100,000. The city is now looking at the two lowest bids, and the first amount of money that pops up is the engineering bid to supervise the project. That's 167,700. The low bid was 2,888,087 dollars with a contingency of 37,900. That brings the total bill up for just that portion, 3,013,687. The second bid, even more astronomical, you tack on the 167 for the engineering bid, 3,386,162 dollars for the base bid with a contingency fee of 207,000 for a grand total of 3,760,862 dollars. For the city to even make it on either one of these projects, you're looking at, they're going to have to get another 300,000 plus on the low bid from the town, or a million plus for the second bid from the town. You know, we have a lot of needs. I'm in favor of, I think this project is overkill from the beginning. It doesn't even cover the flood issues we have on Shore Avenue while the flooding takes place at a lower wall, lower wall that the city is not taking care of. So I think we need to relook at the, the whole project. I could, you know, if we have to go with a very low bid, I mean, I guess I could survive that without too much complaining, but to dump another million into this project is absolutely insane, while we have much greater needs in the city and a lot of flooding issues in other areas of the, of the town of Groton. It's that Shore Avenue wall, take a ride down, it's in front of the, where the Grizzle Hotel used to be, there's no homes there, it doesn't protect anything. Somebody was stated, I believe the mayor, that it's going to save lives. There are no lives that are going to be lost at that particular site. I collect historic photographs, that wall's been there for about 150 years. What people are concerned about is the cement veneer covering the granite wall. That's failing in spots, I agree with that, so fix that. But why, why dig up the whole granite wall that's been up there for 150 years? I've got photographs of that wall after the 1938 hurricane. Boats and lots of other debris were on top of the wall, but the wall stood tall. That was the worst storm we've ever had, in my knowledge. So again, please, if we're going to spend almost 4 million on this, somebody needs to take another look at this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Terry Rice.
Good evening. Terry Rice, 67 Ramstil Street in Groton. I did want to speak about the Groton Heights School. I am, by the way, a member of the City Planning and Zoning Commission, but of course I'm speaking for myself. You're all aware of the unique location of the school next to Fort Griswold, the monument, Bill Memorial Library, and the Groton Heights Historical District. So when the property is being sold for commercial development, I think it's got to be reconsidered as far as other potential uses because it's very likely that any such use would be inconsistent with the character of, of the area. Jim Streeter had a great idea before about meeting with the people in the neighborhood to, to find out what they want, because rather than it just being a source for a relatively insignificant amount of money for the town, and, and the property would be lost in perpetuity for any public use, I think it makes a lot of sense to have some meetings with, with the neighborhood. But I, I think another use that should be considered is some type of community use would do a number of different things. It'd be a service to the community, and the right type of use could bring in people to the area. The city, I know, is struggling to try and bring people into the Thane Street area, to try and get the businesses revitalized in that area, and something like perhaps a children's museum that would be a service to the children of the community as well as bringing in people from other areas would be something that would enhance that goal as, as well to bring in people to try and reinvigorate the downtown area. You could consider other community uses. You have all kinds of things going on in the area, have the Coast Guard Academy, I'm sure there's types of uses, whether it's a place for the cadets to come or other college students, a lot of different types of community uses. I think that the building could be used for, which would again bring, not, not the inconsistent commercial development, would bring people into the area that could, could help the area. And also you could preserve the green area, because if it's sold for commercial use, I would assume whoever is developing it is going to want to develop it to the maximum and try and use all the open space that presently exists. If you had some type of community use along the lines of what I was suggesting, you could have playground for the kids, you could have community gardens, you could have the property used in association with the, the children's museum and so forth. So I think it would be a good idea to consider those things instead of a use that very well might be inconsistent with the area. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Westerveld, would you like to come up now?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Scott Westerveld. I live at 7 Boulder Court here in Mystic. Right now, I'd just like to talk about the, I believe on your agenda tonight, you've got personnel appointments, and I'd just like to talk about that for a second. So some years ago, the town was granted certified local government status by the National Park Service. Part of the application for that, and I'm just going to read an excerpt, excerpt from the overview, it says, "There is a statement outlining the process utilized by the municipality to appoint members and an assurance that the municipality will make a good faith effort to ensure that at least two of the commission's members or alternates meet the professional requirements." At this time, there is an alternate that does meet that requirement, no one else on the commission meets that requirement, but this, or the past Town Council, and it looks like this Town Council is going to not advance the one person who's qualified, who has applied for this position, up to a full member, and I believe that that should be, I believe that that's wrong. You have the ability to overrule the personnel appointments, recommendations, to support and advance the one person, as I said, who has interviewed for this, who's asked to be on this commission, he's part of the commission as an alternate, but he's asked to be moved to a full member. Lacking any reason professionally why he should not be able to do that, I don't think that that's fair to him, I don't think it's fair to the Town of Groton. Part of the certified local government program from the National Park Service opens up avenues for funding for the town, and if we don't meet everything that is required for that certified local government program, is that going to hinder us at getting future grants that might help for the preservation of historical properties in the town? So thank you very much, appreciate your time, and thank you all for all you do.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Hugh Barton, again, Hartwell Drive. Two quick points, one for the people I haven't met. I am the Chair of the Water Pollution Control Authority, and so I just want you to associate a face with the name. We'll be voting in a few months on the sewer rates. I would like to comment on the S.B. Butler School. I voted for 15 years over there. I lived in that neighborhood. It is a nice neighborhood. I think one of the things I find confusing is that people say, "Well, the streets are narrow, there's, you know, we don't want more traffic." But if you're, if that park is going to be for the whole town of Groton, and if people are going to come to that area, develop it, whatever is a multi-use, you know, building and, and parkland, et cetera, you're going to bring traffic in, or you're not being successful. So I think one of the challenges about this is that the, the uses that would actually make use of these spaces involve cars, there's no way around it. And if they're going to be really successful as community centers that bring in a lot of people, then they're going to bring in a lot of their cars. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive, again, Board of Ed member, but here speaking as a private citizen. In regards to the funding for the Seawall project, I concur with Mr. Boucher's comments that, that that situation may want to revisit and look at the, at the dynamics of the whole situation. I believe it's 1.4 million that we have, the town has set aside. That money could go to many other places that is possibly more greatly needed. In regards to other Town Council business, I would encourage this council to carry on with the idea of inviting the Town Planning and Zoning Commission into a joint meeting of some sort in advisory capacity to discuss and explore ways that the planning and zoning regulations and the town ordinance, or possible Town Council ordinance regarding short-term rentals could be designed to dovetail and work in concert as opposed to being in conflict with each other. This is a both and type situation, not an either or. If you look at other communities that have taken action, there's similar models like that out there, where planning and zoning has regulations that work in concert with an ordinance that fills in the gaps that planning and zoning does not have the authority to execute. Likewise, planning and zoning regulations fill in the gaps where Town Council ordinances do not have the authority to execute. However, it is understandable that the Planning and Zoning Commission may be somewhat hesitant to come visit, given the tone that was presented by the Chair of the Body last week, some comments that were made regarding Planning and Zoning Commission, some questions that were asked. And I'm also additionally troubled by the, some decisions by the Chair of the Body in regards to governing other council members' body movements. I found a number of, number of moments in a, in a short sequence last meeting, which I was here for in attendance, and I saw often council members will nod their heads or make some gestures with their hands in an affirmative, in an affirmative motion, typically when presenters are speaking, you'll see people nod or, you know, make some sort of gesture towards the presenter, usually in the affirmative. Sometimes they shake their heads no, like they got an issue. But either way, councillors should be allowed the autonomy of their own body. And while the Chair of the Council has many duties and many responsibilities and many rights in that role as governing the meeting, governing other people's bodily autonomy is not one of them. So I would urge the Chair of the Body to reconsider such actions in the future. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Keith Hedrick. I'm with 156 Santa Costa Parkway, and tonight I want to address you as the City Groton Mayor. I want to read you an email that my planner Wesley Crean and I received yesterday from a resident and, and also a developer, and it is dis, it is disconcerting to me, but I want to share it with this council. Dear Leslie, after attending the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, my wife and I have decided to reconsider investment plans in Groton. As you are aware, we own property on Thane Street. Over the past five years, I have had discussions with you in various events and formal meetings about the possibility of developing our property in a way that would enhance Thane Street and align with the community's interest. When you imagine, correction, when you inquire about the reasons behind the lack of investment and development along Thane Street by property owners, I urge you to consider the conduct of certain elected officials in town. Regarding a zoning change amendment in another part of town that has no bearing on our property, Ian Thomas, elected Town of Groton Board of Education, Portia Board of Line, Setting Town Councilor, Town of Groton, John Goodrich, Historic District Commissioner, and Michael Boucher have all copied and pasted identical language and their correspondence with you, portraying my wife's and my property's ownership as sinister. Moreover, they have knowingly disseminated false information throughout the town, claiming that we intend to construct a six-story building on our property. Given that this group is organized around elected officials in town, it is evident that any proposal we put forward will not be, will not receive impartial consideration. Additionally, we deeply value our longstanding relationship with the community, which we've been part of for decades. We have personally organized a community to oppose projects such as establishing Garfield Ops facility on the Thane Street and its attempts to expand during processing activities. At 80-year-old, at 80 years old, we do not want, we do not want to look forward to the hassle and stress of a group of self-interested politicians making us into a cause that they can use for their own political ambitions and disparaging us and our relationships with the community. As we determine how to best settle our property, please let us know when you are available to meet with me and Sergio to review the site details so that I may market the property correctly. And I will enter this into the record. Additionally, I have a letter to the Town Council. The City of Groton and the Town of Groton are at a crossroads. The opportunity for positive growth, neighborhood creation and enhancement in the revival of economic development and existing, and existing underutilized economic nodes could happen in our near future. The stars are near alignment. In the next three, three to five years, Electric Boat Shipyard is expected to hire 3,000 employees locally. We currently do not have enough housing, amenities, or community retail and services to accommodate this growth. We have space available to build housing, but in some locations, this means higher density residential uses by building up, not to the sky, but perhaps as high as five or six stories in areas that are now maxed out at two or three stories. Our challenge lies in developing properties as contextual incremental infill and as larger developments that link existing safe, attractive, walkable, and bikeable public space. Anytime you build in or near an existing neighborhood, there will be some disruption. The goal is that the final product contributes to quality of life within the city and the town. town. Our challenge is to build new and redevelop space to serve larger social, economic, and physical needs, more than just housing. We want to enhance existing neighborhoods, create new walkable Main Street gateways, even create new neighborhood settings. We must allow and encourage built places that people like. To do this, we need to develop cooperative relationships between property owners who have the right to develop their property, and neighbors, neighbors who typically occupy single or two-family homes, and businesses in each municipality to ensure safe buildings and spaces designed based on best practices, the law, and local regulations. New and rehabilitated social places can accommodate small and medium-scale economic development and housing that can benefit everyone. Being against all proposed change is not a tenable option. Complaints about a lack of progress in Groton must be accompanied, accompanied by responsible, legal, and feasible alternatives. Otherwise, it is nothing but pointification and self-grandizement, and does nothing to make the city and town better. Critics often offer, correction, critics must offer reasonable alternatives to problems they identified instead of shouting down those who have worked hard to develop proposals for consideration. Our commissioners are volunteers who are working hard to help our communities become better for all of us. We may not always agree, but we deserve our respect and civility. I ask that everyone raise our concerns, put forth their ideas, and listen respectfully and with an open mind, offer solutions which will better our city and town. Very respectfully, Keith Hedrick, Mayor, City of Groton. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Can I readdress one of the comment that was made regarding the Butler property?
Would you like to say your name and address again?
Kristen Stam, 182 Bayview.
I'm sorry, you've already spoken.
Can I just readdress the comment that was made by the gentleman?
Everybody only gets five minutes. I'm so sorry.
I didn't have five minutes. I mean, I had time, but I didn't have a full five minutes. This will take me two seconds. The comment he made was regarding the traffic on bringing in a business to the S.P. Butler School. The difference between having an open community center is the traffic that would be there would be for the local area, the local community that knows our neighborhood. Having a bed and breakfast in our neighborhood is inviting the world to our neighborhood, and having that traffic in our neighborhood versus just a local community who knows to slow down because there's children in the area. That's the difference between the traffic of a community place versus the traffic of a bed and breakfast that would invite the world to our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Portia Bordalon, 24 Jefferson Drive, Groton, Connecticut. I feel it's important for me to speak as a citizen because we are limited up there, and I am a taxpayer first before an elected official. The comments that were just made regarding myself, I can't speak for the other people that were included in that. Yes, I live in the city, and I have every right to speak about a six-story monrocity development and a zoning change that's going to happen on my side of town, when we just heard the West Side's operating, and that there is a lack of, increase of heating and a lack of forest trees on that area. It was stated at that meeting, and I stated exactly what I said, that I was not against development, I was fine with four stories, I was against the easement of a six-story building on Thane Street. I hope everyone didn't walk downtown this day and look up at three more stories. Imagine six stories on Thane Street. But yet we heard people today, including the person that spoke just about me, about Groton Heights and how we want to protect that and make sure it's safe up there in its historic nature. I am concerned about our future in Groton as a city resident, and the safety and the concerns of our environment long-term with big overdrafting buildings. If the current zoning only allows one or two stories, why those six now? It also wasn't stated properly that the commission agreed, including Mark Olfinger, who's our former, former town manager, who also was concerned about height variances, that the zoning is going back around the drawing board after the comments were made by constituents from the city to look at that height requirement. So, again, I just think, you know, out of context, if you don't attend those city meetings, you wouldn't understand. I think Mr. Boucher, he fought so hard for the residents of Brantford Manor when they tried to come speak here and were nervous, and I did a lot of outreach, as well as Mr. Boucher helped those residents of Groton. So, what he's doing, he also lives close to Shore Road, down the water, because he thinks it's the Seawall. He comes out and speaks openly, and then it's seen as an attack. But let's get it corrected. That commission decided to go back around the table to relook at the zoning heights and other considerations. Six stories on Thane Street would just engulf it. Again, four development, but I may even stop at four. So I think representation and proper comments are so important, and I, that's why I feel it is important to speak.
Would anybody else like to speak? All right. We're going to close Citizens Petitions. And I think at this time, maybe we should take a little recess for about 10 minutes or so. And I'd like to thank everybody who came out and spoke, to have, like, 25 people out speaking tonight. I think that is wonderful that our community is engaged, and that they came out and participated in democracy, and I appreciate every one of you. Thank you very much.
We are back from recess at eight twenty-three, and next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Councilor Parker, would you like to ask the consent calendar?
Make a resolution accepting town council meeting minutes. Be it resolved at the minutes of the town council meeting of February sixth, two thousand twenty-four, and the special meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four, are hereby accepted and approved.
Second. Motion by Parker, stated by Russ. Do we have any comments on the minutes or the trust fund contributions?
Madam Mayor, there was a correction. It's happened again. I know Council Russ had mentioned it, but it is Hallie Keeler.
Page?
Page seven of the minutes. It's Hale Keller. I believe it's Hallie Keeler.
Hallie, H A L I, K E E L E R.
So that's page seven or fourteen?
Fourteen of our packet, page seven of the minutes.
Anybody else? All right, seeing no more comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right, that passes eight to zero to zero. Up next, we have communication and reports, town councillors. Let's start with Council Board one.
Thanks. Received some comments regarding S B Butler, Pleasant Valley, Groton Heights, concerns. I do get a lot of emails about the city concerns with the six-story building and zoning variance versus four-story. I did have some concerns about me nodding my head at the last meeting. Someone approached me in the grocery store and said, "Council Board along, don't move." And they laughed and said that they felt that that was unfair. And I just want to publicly state that I do think that's unfair. I do think that I feel personally that I was, you know, nodding my head is my body's right, and so I just don't agree with that. I think everyone should have the right to, you know, you have conversations, you nod your head, and that's just very normal and many public displays of showing attention and that you're listening. I did attend a defending state champion in New Haven, and we had a senior, Elena Brokhardt. I always mess up her last name for some reason. She's an epi fencer. She's a senior, and she came back as our state champion with the gold. It was such an honor to attend and watch all of the fencing matches, but definitely seeing her come home with that victory was amazing. I've attended many Board of Education meetings, got many concerns from folks in emails regarding Board of Education budgets, attending, you know, obviously some city planning and zoning meetings, and I think that is... I've had some people reach out with questions regarding the Gunjiwont property vandalism and, you know, the plans on what we're doing with that. I think that's all I have. Let me just say, I lost my spot here. Oh, also received correspondings about personnel appointments. You know, just conflict of interest and concerns there from people, as some has stated, mainly with historic district commission. Some people reached out about the athletic task force group and fields. Yes, Groton Conservation Advocates did reach out about the tree coverage and preserving that. And then the many communications, you know, from the public hearings. I think that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Pacino.
I have all the same emails that we've all gotten over the last two weeks about the S B Butler and Groton Heights and the other school. I just went brain dead.
Pleasant Valley.
Pleasant Valley, thanks. And I've got nothing to add.
Thank you. Councilor Russ.
I also received various emails and communications, nothing further to add.
Thank you. Councilor Jones.
I also received various emails and communications, nothing further.
Councilor McBride.
Thank you, yes. Numerous emails regarding the Board of Ed budget, flooding on River Road, Groton City seawall costs, increasing development plans of school properties, and the need to ensure communities are involved, similar to what Mark Ovinger mentioned tonight, even if it's non-voting, personal appointments, concerns on some of the things that transpired there, and many other emails that was mentioned earlier. I also listened to the seven of our Senator Blumenthal and Senator Murphy on congressional direct spending. I also reached out to David Aldrich, the executive director of SCAR, and got up to speed on some matters, reviewing some information as the appointee for the council liaison to that committee, digging in, getting interested into what that organization is moving forward so I can bring back some information to council. I'll be attending the next meeting they have on March thirteenth. I also listened to the legislative hearing on the Transportation Committee that was held yesterday. Very important, all-day-long committee meeting regarding, the most important things I'd like to bring forward is there was a lot of mention from local legislators and delegation regarding bringing back the Shoreline East funding to its pre-COVID level, which I thought was very important. The Transportation Committee seemed to be, I can't speak to them and say they're in favor, but from the discussions that I heard, it seemed like that's something they're going to try to move forward and try to get that funding back so we can get Shoreline East to where it was. There was also an interesting discussion on topics that potentially some proposed legislation later on in the year regarding helmets to be worn by individuals using motorcycles for initial three-year usage, which I thought, I've never heard anything of that, but they want to, because of all the deaths that are occurring, they're trying to bring some measures back to protect the safety of the goodness, opposition to that and people for that, but just wanted to bring that forward. And also want to report, I did get a text that Fitch Basketball won tonight their first game in the state championship, in the state playoffs against Wyndham, so I wanted to congratulate them on that win. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended this, or before tonight's meeting, I attended my first, children's first Groton meeting as the new council liaison to that. They are doing, I learned about their many programs. They have a prescription reading program through Groton Cold Star Pediatrics, a rocks program that the police department does, Groton Go, which is a newer initiative to increase community involvement for students throughout the summer, and community cafes that periodically happen out through the month. I met with the director beforehand, who got me up all to speed, and then participated in their monthly meeting, and I look forward to our meeting next month. And same emails and communications regarding S B Butler, Groton Heights, Pleasant Valley, that everybody else received.
Thank you. Councilor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the T P C C A meeting, and I will email Mr. Burt my liaison report so it can be forwarded to the rest of the council. I also attended the Black History Month events that was put on by Parks and Rec through Clayton Parter, so he did a good job, and thank him for setting it up, and Mr. Booker for assisting in the events. If you guys get a chance, I was just watching Free Renty about the story of Tammy Lanier's family in her lawsuit against Harvard. Very interesting turnabout, I'll just put it that way. Various emails, as everyone has stated, about properties and the upcoming budget, and that is all I have to report.
Thank you. I also have had numerous communications and conversations with residents on a plethora of topics. Watched many meetings via YouTube regarding the town business. I also responded to a lot of those emails as well that we've all received. I would say I, just in the last very few days, received probably eighteen emails going over the library budget, S B Butler, Pleasant Valley School, Groton Heights, and the Israel Hamas issue. Also this week, this past week actually, on leap day, my son Jackson and his lovely fiancee Valia took the leap and got married, and I would like to wish the young couple well wishes and a lifetime of wedded bliss. So we will be moving on to Clerk of the Council.
Okay, an ad will be placed in the New London Day, posted on social media and the town website announcing that early voting will be March twenty-sixth through the twenty-eight and March thirtieth at the Registrar of Voters. Well, the address is sixty-one Four Hill Road, with the primary being held April second at everyone's assigned district polling place. And also received the same letters that you guys got.
Thank you. Clerk of the representative town meeting.
Okay. Last month's meeting was canceled. Next meeting is scheduled for March thirteenth at seven P M. Vacancies are still needed to be filled. District one needs one Democratic seat, has one Democratic seat. District four, three minority representation seats. And lastly, District five, one Democratic seat.
Okay, thank you. Town manager.
First, the budget. Tomorrow we'll have the proposed budget wrapped up and sent out to print. So by Charter, those numbers due back before the fifteenth to be distributed, fifteenth of March. So that goes out at the end of the day tomorrow. Mention of Counselor McBride, I mentioned the Shoreline East bill, S B two seventy-seven. I did submit a letter and testimony in support of that, so, yesterday. S B Butler, just to mention, there's been a lot of mention, a lot of people mentioning that bed and breakfast. There's nothing like that under consideration by the town council, just to make that clear, or by town staff. That was an unsolicited idea from a resident, and it's not recognized as a proposal until, if and when we go through a full process to solicit proposals. So that's not at all being looked at, just to make that clear to the public. And then I've had a couple people point out, I just want a friendly reminder in terms of using the proper honorifics. If you look at Charter five point two, following the election held in accordance to section three point three, the newly-elected council shall meet as prescribed in section three point three and shall choose one of its members to be chairman of the council. The chairman shall be known as the mayor and will retain all the rights of other members. And it goes on about it being the ceremonial head of the council, but I've had a few people point out that not everyone's using that proper honorific, and I assure them it's not disrespect, it's probably a lack of education. So a reminder to all people that come before the council, it's Mayor Franco.
Well, thank you.
I have a question.
Council Board one.
Thank you. Can you speak a little bit about the Shepherd of Sea property on Gunjiwont at all?
Yeah, I had sent something prior mentioned to the council. That's been a long, as we know, rundown building's become a hazard, and through a long process, eventually Planning Department were able to get approval to move forward to board it up for safety reasons.
And is the owners involved in any way, or?
Repeatedly attempts at communication and occasional communication is just part of the process. I could ask the Planning Department for a little more info, though.
Oh, yeah, and it's on the market?
I don't know if it's currently, it's been out and off, so I'm not sure if this is at the moment, if there's a sign out there or not.
Thank you.
Mr. Burt, it was notated tonight when people were speaking that there was a survey sent to neighbors around the Groton Heights neighborhood? And would it be possible for the council to receive the results of that survey so we can review it as well?
Yes, I wasn't sure off the top of my head what that was, or if that was maybe part of a larger, you know, maybe a larger Parks and Rec type thing, I don't know, but I'll try to find out.
Can you inquire?
Yeah.
Thanks. And if it's not pertinent, you could just let us know.
I'll find out.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Council Board one.
Thanks. I just remember, I know that you're like the chair of the TOE committee, and we use the revision of the twenty-twenty-one, not the twenty-twenty-three. And I know Mark Ovinger and many others are asking for more neighborhood involvement, and that committee that you guys, you know, agreed upon for the twenty-twenty-one draft is mainly town staff and some people that are on like planning and zoning. So what would I have to do, send a referral for you guys to like look at trying to incorporate some neighborhood involvement when?
Well, my impression was it was probably for the later part of the process when the mayor appoints a committee, but at the review process, but with the actual solicitation before putting out the RFP and solicitation. But yes, it would be a referral request.
Okay, so I'll send that out, and I guess there's pretty much a lot of documentation from the Proper Use Committee that came before us that people were asking for. So I'll resubmit. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Up next is committee reports, and it is the committee of the whole, Mayor Franco. So I have some things I'd like to share. First, I will address the behavior of counselors, which falls under decorum. And there have been even multitude of point of orders from this council for even fellow counselors rolling their eyes. So when counselors are speaking, when they do not have the floor and waving their hands around in the air, or while other people do have the floor and are speaking, it is a decorum issue, which impacts fellow counselors. And I also believe our community expects more from us as elected officials while we do the business of the people. I met with Mr. Burt this past week on Monday to review the upcoming agenda items. This week, the council has received a wealth of letters from residents along with their thoughts on empty school properties. The city, three-on-three public work- The city three-on-three public works meeting is scheduled for this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. for councilors Boarder, Jones, and Merritt, who represent the town council. An invite was sent to the council asking for a counselor to read a Groton proclamation celebrating a citizen's 100th birthday. If interested, please respond to the email by Monday of this, of next week. Mr. Ross Gianfrido, the senior government liaison specialist at Electric Boat, reached out to me and asked if I would recommend groups in the area which Electric Boat could sponsor. I responded with Groton Mystic Falcon Youth Football Cheer League, Groton Little League, Groton Soccer Club, Bike at Groton, Fitch Robotics Team, Team 2168, the Illumina Falcons, Fitch High School Sports, Mark Romano, Director of Athletics, Groton Regional Theater, the Bill Memorial Library, which is a nonprofit, the Mystic Memorial Library, which is also a nonprofit, and Community Spreaks Out, which is also a nonprofit for substance abuse. This is not an all-inclusive list, so if any counselors have suggestions on any other organizations, please send me in an email with the name of the organization and their email contact. And I'm going to close with a little bit of Groton history from town historian Mr. Streeter's Book of Groton Historical Bits and Pieces. Electric Boat had its beginnings in Groton in 1911, when Electric Boat acquired the New London Ship and Engine Company to build diesel engines, machinery, and parts for submarines, located where Electric Boat is situated today. In 1922, Electric Boat expanded its facilities to assist with overhauling S-class submarines, such as rebuilding engines and installing torpedo tubes. In November of 1924, EB signed a contract with the government of Peru to build two Holland-type submarines. The submarines were to be constructed at EB at a cost of $1.2 million, with an additional $260,000 in accessories. The two subs, called R1 and R2, are christened with Peruvian wine in 1925 and 1926, with thousands in attendance at both ceremonies. The Peruvian government was so pleased with the first two submarines constructed by Electric Boat, they contracted two more. Now here's the kicker. In 1933, Electric Boat delivered their first submarine built for the United States government, the USS Cuddlefish. Who knew Electric Boat's first submarines were built for the country of Peru? How very interesting. So, personal appointments. Chair Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Personnel Appointments Committee met on February 15th, and we will be covering all the details in new business.
My, thank you. Rules, Chair Parker.
We will be having our rules meeting tomorrow evening at 6:30, discuss the two referral items that we received.
Public Safety, Chair Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we are still waiting for some responses from the town staff, and as soon as we get that, we will resume our meeting.
Thank you. We are on to new business, number 2024171, various appointments, reappointments, February. Counselor Jones, would you like to read the motion on page 25?
Thank you very much. This is a resolution making for the following appointments, reappointments, to authorize agencies, authorities, boards, commissions, and committees, the ABCs. It's resolved that the town council appoint the following individuals to the authorized ABCs as noted. An appointment, Thomas McLaughlin for Shellfish Commission. Appointment as an alternative, Ted Rathston to Shellfish Commission. Appointment as an alternative, Ally Mitchell to Shellfish Commission. Appointment as an alternative, Jay Letandre to Shellfish Commission. Appointment of Meredith Russell to the Water Pollution Control Authority, and appointment of Ted Kitzman to the Historic District Commission. So moved?
Second. Moved by Jones, seconded by Rusk. Any comments? Counselor Boarder.
Yeah, it said it would be discussed here, so I guess some more information would be great. Who else applied for seats? Because, I mean, the full report is not given, and this doesn't say everything, so it said it would be talked about here. My other question, so that's my first question. Were there any applicants that were not selected?
There is a packet for personal appointments that is available to the full town council.
But we should discuss if you're not going to speak under, under personal, usually you give a synopsis of, you know. I guess for me, I'm having trouble. As it was stated tonight, I actually know Mr. Kitzman very well, so it has nothing to do personally with him, but I think other people have applied and had applied many times since I've been on here. I don't know about the personal conflicts. I mean, we had an email come that said, from a town manager, a year and a half ago or two years ago, stating his reasons why, you know, a certain person shouldn't be, it was John Goodrich, shouldn't be on the commission. If you weren't on the council then, maybe you should request the email. And then it just like continued on, and it has stated, you know, his, his certifications. I do not think it's, we have open seats on commission, I do not think it's this body's job to not put people on based on personal opinions, or what we hear from the town manager in an email, or from this person, or what. You know, our job is to put in people that are going to be able to do the job, and it should be about policy, not about personality. And so for me, I can't. For me, I know the Goodrich family, I went to church with them here, went to school with his disabled sister who has a disability, and used to sit with her, the church fuse as a kid. Didn't know Mr. Goodrich as well as I knew his sister, because she graduated with me. But I do not think I feel comfortable with rejecting people and not putting people's names forward over other folks. So I guess my question is, I'm in full support of everybody on the Shellfish Commission, and I do think Ted Kitzman is a great person, but I think overlooking another person is just not fair when we have open seats on things, and people are all volunteers. So in the past, you guys have broken these up. Can we break this vote up tonight? Because I'd like to abstain from the Historic District Commission one, because I do not feel, I feel it's a little dusty for me, and I don't like some of the comments that were made at the Historic District Commission regarding members, again, if you like them or not. And I think it's becoming, in my opinion, it felt more personal, and so I would like to abstain from that one. But I would like to be on the record voting for the others. So how can we facilitate that? That's my question.
Are you making a motion?
I'm asking a question.
Well, you have to make amended motion.
I'm asking a question.
You asked how to do it. You have to make an amended motion.
Fine. So I'd like to make an amended motion that we move the Shellfish Commission and Water Pollution as one, and Historic District Commission separately.
McBride will second that.
And my reason was already stated. There is a lot of emails going back. I don't want to be a part of it. I wouldn't want to be on the other side either, if you don't like, if there's some personal reasons or emails floating, I don't want to be a part of it. I do not want my name attached to not voting in a volunteer, for whatever their reasons are. And again, it's nothing against Mr. Kitzman, I think he's also very wonderful, and I attend church with him. So I, but I cannot in good faith attach my name to a lot of the opposition that's going on, and a lot of emails that are circulating and have been circulating for two years. So I, that, that's my concern. And I do think that we, you know, it seems like it's been danced and pushed over, it's like, oh, we'll discuss it there, well, let's discuss it. What happened? Why, I mean, we're hearing all these people speak that there's concerns, you know, what, what is going on? Why is a person with the certification constantly being overlooked? When we can barely get volunteers to sign up for all of our commissions? That's a concern.
Mayor, can I just address one thing? Just to mention, I've never, I have not sent an email out in the past about Mr. Goodrich's applications for HDC. I think you're thinking of Citizen and Police Committee.
I'll double check my records, but it definitely was one for one of the commissions.
Yeah, Citizen and Police Committee, yeah.
Right, so either way, there was a derogatory, in my opinion, derogatory response as to why not to push someone forward that could change someone's opinion. So I just don't think it's.
I could tell you it was not derogatory, but, okay.
In my opinion, just that there was a police file, if you had, the email stated, if you have any questions, contact the police department. But that doesn't, I mean, that to me, I was like wondering what was there. So that, that's concerning to me. Thank you. I'll, I'll check the email again, I'll pull it up now.
Is there any more comments on the amended motion? Counselor McBride?
Yeah, I just have more, more questions and comments, somewhat on the line with Counsel Boarder, but I'm just, I guess first off, how many regarding Historic District Commission? I do think it's proper to do these individually, because I'm unsure about this one as well, so I do like that motion, but I guess my question, this is just on a motion, can I talk about the HDC commission now? So can I, like, I guess my question is, how many people are on the Historic District Commission?
I believe what we have on the floor right now is a vote to vote on these separately.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take those matters up later. So I would, I would support this, and the reason being is that's what we've done in the past. If we have counselors that don't feel comfortable voting for it, in summary, I think it's proper to do individually. That way each counselor can express their desire, so I think that's appropriate to do it as we have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We will take a vote on voting on the Shellfish and the Water Pollution Control candidates first, and the Historic District Commission as a separate vote. So we are voting on, to vote on separately, to split the vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions. That passes. Eight to zero to zero. All right, so now we have two, we will vote on these separately. So first, we will take on the Shellfish Commission and the Water Pollution Control Authority. Do we have any comments? Counselor Boarder.
I'm excited to see this many people on the Shellfish Commission, because I know a lot of people have resigned or moved on, so I think it's very important, commissions that do a lot with the state and water tests and things, I mean, way above my head anyway. But I'm, I'm glad to see we have volunteers that are willing to step up and do the work for that, so I thank you so very much. And also, water pollution is another very important thing, so I, again, think volunteers willing to put their name forward.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to have, make any comments? Okay. So we will vote on the top five items, on those candidates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions. That passes. Eight to zero to zero. Now we will vote on the Historic District Commission. Does anybody have any comments? Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I got more questions and comments, I think, or maybe some comments. First off, how many people are on this commission?
Point of order.
Your point of order?
We're only voting on the person on this list. We're, this is, we don't go further into it, we're just voting on the personnel appointments. We're not getting into the details.
I don't quite understand what you mean by that. I have a question on this particular vote, which relates to the Historic District Commission, so I'm asking about the Historic District Commission. I think that's a legitimate question.
Point of information.
Your point of information.
We've done it in the past, and you, when they were presenting, when folks were presenting their committee report, it was said it would be discussed later.
I'm sorry.
And we weren't given the option to speak then, because we could have asked questions. So it was left till now. So I asked that we either go back, so we can get the report from those committees and ask our questions pertinent, or you, it was said that we could do it during that time.
Was that a question?
I couldn't hear what she said. So that's my question. Can we go back then, or was it stated that we?
Go back to what? I'm not.
So when the committees did their report, in the past, we were able to ask the committee the questions then. But when folks gave the report tonight, they said, we'll give that report and more information later on in the agenda. So that's where we're assuming we'd be able to ask the questions. So my question is, we should be allowed, is my question, or should we go back and allow the committees?
How is this a point of information?
Because I'm confused why we weren't allowed at the beginning.
But Counselor McBride has the floor, and you're asking like questions as you should when it's your turn to speak.
I'm asking information, because it was said, after Counselor Parker stated that she didn't think we could, I'm asking a question that, wouldn't that be handled under committee reports? That's my question.
Counselor Parker. I understand what you're saying, and I think Counselor McBride should be able to ask how many people are on the committee, but thank you very much.
Point of information.
Point of information.
As a, there are five committee members, full members, and then three alternate members.
Thank you. Just to back up on my questions, we're not part of that committee, right? So we can't participate in those committee discussions, because we're only allowed three. So I think I have the right to ask questions regarding this tonight, because I can't, I can't ask them at the committee meetings, because I can't participate. So this is really the only forum for me to question this decision, so I don't, I think it is part of discussion. Anyway, five full, three alternates, has that been full?
I'm sorry, did you say five and three?
Five full, three, right.
No, five full, three alternate, yes.
Has that, is the committees, is that full right now? Does this fill up the committee?
There's one vacancy.
And this is the one vacancy? Or there will be one if this?
This is the one vacancy on the, the full committee, there were vacancies as alternates.
And how long has this vacancy existed?
I'm sorry.
Has this, has this vacancy existed for some time?
We don't have that information in front of us right now.
The reason I'm asking, because I have concerns as well, you know, I've read with, I've read many emails for the past few months on John Goodrich's, Goodrich's, you know, understanding of these, this matter, and it's beyond me, but, and I can't speak for Ted Kitzman or Katzman, but I just know John seems to have knowledge, I worked with him well in the Property Use Committee, he does have a lot of talent, and I just feel it's strange that he's an alternate and not being moved up to a full committee member, where someone else coming from the outside is being moved to a full committee member, and we're not looking at the alternate. So that, to me, seems a little bizarre. And I don't know the reasons why, maybe there are reasons why, I just feel it's, I'm not hearing it, so I don't understand that. So I guess my proposal, I want to get some thoughts are.
Point of information. Your point of. Mr. Kitzman is an alternate, just for clarification.
Thank you, he is, okay. So they're both alternates, so.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that information. So then that point's not valid, but, you know, my understanding is, John, maybe you can correct me, is there a possibility of some threatened lawsuits or something on this matter this evening?
I don't know. None that, none that I know of.
I know, I just seen various emails over the past few months about, I guess my point is, I've seen various emails about threatens for lawsuits, and I didn't know if my, what I'm trying to get to is, if this position is, has been vacant for some time, that was the reason for my asking, can the position still be vacant, the committees still do their work without us getting into a bind, until we settle what, what appears to me, and what I'm hearing is lawsuits coming down the road, because I've seen emails that other people have been on. So that's why I'm not in favor of voting for Ted this evening, because I feel like there's, if it's not urgent to the business of the town, and I don't, I think with five full and three alternates, they can still perform their work without us moving in a direction of appointing Ted until we resolve the situations that appear to exist, for one reason or not. And then when we can conclude what those issues are, then I think we can appoint someone. So for this evening, I can't support Ted Kitzman, not because he doesn't have the ability, because obviously if he's an alternate, he does, but because I feel there's concerns that need to be alleviated before we move forward. Because we've done this several times over the past few years, we move on in action, like the data center, we move on in action with, with some other situation, I can't recall, and then we end up getting into a lawsuit. So I just, if it's not urgent, I don't, I think we can postpone this vote this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Boarder.
And I know this seat, how long has Mr. Kitzman been on an alternate and versus, I, not that long, if my understanding is right, not as long as Goodman, Goodrich?
I'm about to try and know without looking at his file.
I'm sorry, what's, I'm hearing comments down here, what was the comment?
I'm questioning whether that's a true statement.
We would have to look at the files.
Okay, I'm just asking, because in fairness, usually, you know, an alternate rises after serving for a while, and it was stated that, you know, he has the certifications, and it stated, I went on to the state law stuff, and it states that we need someone on there with that. This vacancy has been, I mean, this has been ongoing since the last two years, asking to get on, and it's kind of been a back and forth, so I do think we need to look at this in a fair manner, and not in a personal manner, in my opinion. I think any taxpayer of the town of Groton has a right to put their name for a board and commission, and they shouldn't be rejected for whatever they do in their personal life and serving, especially when the chair is recommending that person. I think it looks bad when we then change and bypass. I, I just, I just have concerns with that. You know, if there's more than, you know, I don't have it in front of me. I do think that this is something that could be resolved. Can we put the, can we put a name on the floor? Can we put the, can we put a name on the floor?
You can make an amended motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make an amended motion and put John Goodrich back on the floor, as he's asked for the last several years to this council, and is constantly being overlooked.
I'll second for discussion.
I think it's only fair. I think the name should come before the council. You know, again, what is the harm, or what are we afraid of, in my opinion? Historic District Commission looks at zoning of buildings and structures, and, you know, they, they're not the only voice on there, so they can't really enact any form of legislation or anything without their full body of their members. They have a chair and multiple members. So even if there's a personal conflict, or you don't like the way he votes on something, you know, it's, it's one person on a, on a bigger platform. So I'm putting the name back on, I watched the meetings, and, you know, the person's been asking, and it's only fair to put it up here, and I think it all should come before the council, so that we can make a fair, equitable decision. If that name does not go forward, then I will be abstaining, because I feel, I just don't think it's been done fairly, in my opinion. I can't speak for everybody else. And that's way before this personnel appointment. You guys have been handed stuff from before that was already brewing, and has been brewing, and has been a problem, and it's just been ongoing, and it just needs to end. Just put the guy on, let's end it. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments? Mr. Burt?
There's been things been brought up this evening about potentially some issues regarding Mr. Goodrich. Do you have anything you would like to share?
So I think the council received an email, or at least ultimately received an email last week from Mr. Goodrich mentioning claims of harassment. I just want to say, there's no current investigation or active complaint concerning any claims, nor have we received any communication from any other agency referencing a complaint. He's been asked to explain why he believes he's being harassed, has not provided any details, in his way, in way of a little backstory to date. Originally, there was a claim of harassment from four town councilors, two current, two past, then amended it to add myself, then the, all of Sussman Shapiro, approximately 50 employees, then the HR director, then two more town councilors, and then, at two different times, HDC members, which then prompted, the HDC members prompted a letter from the town attorney, considering that to be harassment of the HDC members from Mr. Goodrich. So that's kind of all in a nutshell.
So I will take my turn right now. I don't vote on somebody because I just have a personal opinion about him or her. I vote because I think there are legitimate reasons and concerns on how I place my votes. And so when it's sort of been insinuated that we should not vote on personal opinions, I agree. But when there's actual situational evidence of things happening, I will, I will vote accordingly. And as typical and usual, when it comes to personnel appointments, these are people that are stepping up and volunteers, and I will not speak negatively of any of them. And I would hope that nobody else would either. So thank you. Councilor Rusk?
I would like to read what I actually stated in the Personnel and Appointments Committee. While certainly Mr. Goodrich appears to have some external support for his appointment, which makes reference to his college degree in art and passion for the preservation of historic homes. Unfortunately, I am also aware that this candidate has potentially threatened civil or administrative litigation against the town and against Groton residents who volunteer their time and talents to serve on town bodies. Therefore, I am personally uncomfortable participating in any action or decision relating to his application at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to make one correction, it is not required to have somebody with the certification on the HDC. You just need to have somebody that has an interest in it, but it's not required by state. And I will also be agreeing with Councilor Rusk, and for this vote, I'll be accusing myself.
Well, it's going to be a roll call vote?
Oh, it's a roll call vote, okay. So then I'll vote.
Okay. That's it. Councilor McBride?
Yeah, thank you. With regards to everything that's going on with this potential vote, I still, I think I'll be abstaining from both votes, because I don't think it's necessary to fill this spot. If it hasn't been filled, and the town does its work with two permanent and two alternates, I don't see why we need to head down a path to cause what could be potential issues one way or another. So with the concerns that are brought up with John Goodrich, I would, I would agree, those are concerns if he's causing issues with the town, so I, you know, maybe it's not the right time to put him on. But I also don't think it's the right time to appoint someone else if there's potential liability for the town. So I'll be abstaining from both of these votes. Thank you.
Similar comments to Councilor Jones and Councilor Rusk. I do not also feel comfortable, and will be abstaining on the vote for Mr. Goodrich.
We will be doing a roll call?
Yeah, okay. So, got it. Thank you.
Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So through you, to Councilor Jones, if I may?
Yes.
The question is, we currently have four people as the full-time and three as the alternate, two as the alternate. Okay.
And there's only one alternate at this time?
And it's only one alternate at this time?
No, no, there's two.
There's two alternates at this time. But if somebody moves up, there'll only be one.
Okay. Thank you, that was my question.
Point of information?
Councilor Gieske?
If we don't fill this seat, then the seat remains vacant, and the two individuals on the floor are alternate members, and the HDC decides who fills that vacancy. Am I correct in that, Manager Burt and Clerk Melendez?
Say it again, please.
The two individuals on the floor, Mr. Goodrich and Mr. Kitzman, are alternate members of the Historic District Commission.
Right.
If we do not appoint either one of them tonight, it is the HDC's decision who fills the vacancy, because they are alternates, correct?
At each meeting where there's a vacancy, if one of the, one or more of the full-time members are absent, then one of the alternates is selected to step in.
Thank you, I just want to put that point on the floor.
That is correct. So they move an alternate up?
Mm-hmm.
Because they have an opening at every meeting, they move an alternate up as to a member, correct? Every meeting? Councilor McBride?
Just a point, I don't know what you call it, clarification, so that's what they've been doing for the past? Yes. Thank you.
Councilor Boardland?
So that's kind of where I'm saying, most of the meetings I've watched, Goodrich is in probably like 50 of them, if not more, being appointed to do the work. And he, so he's doing the work. So whatever the reasons are, that's outside of my, my umbrella. You know, if he feels whatever's going on, that's his personal feeling, I can't, I have to step away from that. That's not me. But what I see is someone that's on there, someone that's doing the work, someone who's being appointed every time. And so my opinion is, how do we not feel, or how does some feel, or how does one feel, or whoever feel, that they don't want to put him on, when he's already being appointed to fill it and has been for, and could be on any day? Because not putting him on here, he still stays an alternate, is that correct?
Correct.
Right. So any day that any of the other people are, are absent, he'll be rose up and put back on. Let's just end this. Put the guy on. He's already doing the work, he's already being raised up, and if there's personal things going on, on top of this, that's something that has to be worked out. If there's lawsuits, and, you know, someone feels like they're being harassed, and maybe there's harassment, that's, that's over my head. I'm not saying I agree with it, or, but I'm not getting involved in that. What I, what I have to do is look before me, I'm to make a decision on paper here, in a box, that he's already doing that. He's already sitting on as an alternate, despite everything else and all the other reasons of why we shouldn't put him on, he's still filling that vacancy every time. So it, to me, it doesn't justify the means for me. I think, let's put him on, let's end this debacle, and, and, and he's been on for, you don't know, you don't have it in front of you how long he's been on? He's been on for, like, over two, three years. John, do you know how long he's been on?
I, not sure.
Ever since I've been on the council, he's been on, so it's been quite some time. So, you know, right tonight, he might have been rose to a regular member. The next meeting, he might be, I mean, sometimes not a lot of commissioners can come to all the meetings. So what are we really changing by not just putting him on? That's my question that I'm coming to my head, after Mr. Gieske made the point, you know, where they do rise him up. Because I went back and watched all the meetings. So I don't understand, just put, put the person on, and let, maybe, maybe some of these problems would dissolve or concerns, if they're feeling like they keep being boxed out. That's just my thought. You know, maybe, I don't know. So I don't think any of that's going to change, he's still an alternate. He's still being rose up to a member, so I, I, my feeling says, let's, I want to resolve this, and let's move forward, and Mr. Kitzman will be filling the vacancy when and if the other person was vacant, and if someone resigns, then I think he'd be a great full-time position. But again, I'll, I'm just, I'm going to vote my conscience based on how I feel in front of me. I can't look at what's happening with the town. I have to look what's in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more, any more comments?
No.
Councilor Gieske?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kitzman is, as a Personnel and Appointments Committee member, if you saw in our agenda packet that was distributed for our February meeting, Mr. Kitzman was also rose at, because the Historic District Commission had been, had, I believe, two to three vacancies, and we have slowly promoted individuals, we've put new members on as a council, and Mr. Kitzman, in his application to be appointed from alternate member to full member, stated that he has been promoted, I want to say roughly 20 times in his time there. So Mr. Kitzman is an active member of the commission. I can't speak for the other councilors in the Personnel and Appointments Committee, but Mr. Kitzman, I feel that Mr. Kitzman was moved forward was because there were no lingering questions of his ability to serve and potential, potential issues regarding the town.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any other comments, and I also would happen to agree with Councilor Rusk's statement, and I think we will be moving forward and taking a vote now. So it is a roll call vote. Mr. Ted Kitzman and Mr. John Goodrich are on the floor. We will go through, and we will choose which, the name we would prefer. Councilor Boardland?
So we're not, we're just picking one, we're not going to vote one and then vote the other?
No.
Okay. Uh, Goodrich.
Councilor Pacina?
I think I'm going to abstain. I don't know enough about the situation, all the people.
Councilor Rusk?
Kitzman.
Kitzman.
Councilor McBride?
Abstain.
Councilor Gieske?
Kitzman.
Councilor Parker?
Kitzman.
I am also Kitzman. Mr. Ted Kitzman passes with five votes. Mr. Goodrich has one vote, and abstentions are two. Moving on to our next item is 2024-184-1, approval of 2024 golf course rates. Councilor Gieske, would you like to move that?
Yes. Resolution setting 2024 rates for the Shenandoah Classic Golf Course, be it resolved that the municipal golf course rates for 2024 shall be the rates attached to this resolution, so moved.
Second.
Boardland? So it's moved by Gieske, seconded by Boardland. And just for the community, if you're watching this, we have had full discussions on this in our COW meetings, our committee of the whole, and we are passing things this evening. Are there any comments? Councilor Boardland?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to restate, I think this is pretty fair, and I'm, again, excited to, you know, see the return of the military section that we put on last time, and looking at other ways to, you know, as it was stated, it's not in this draft, but they're open to ideas of first-time free events for beginner adults that want to come out and try golfing. So very excited, and I think this is, the golf course is a wonderful asset to our community.
Any other comments? Councilor McBride?
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to comment that for the residents, that in case they weren't able to see the committee hold, this is based upon, I believe, a 5% increase from last year, and last year's rates were not increased. So I just wanted to make sure, and that, in the discussions we had, it was discussed that their, you know, their, their revenues cover the share of their costs for their operating unit, so I just wanted to add that, as we discussed that in the committee hold. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any more comments, so let's take a vote on the approval of the 2024 golf course rates, moved by Gieske, seconded by Boardland. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. All right, that passes eight to zero to zero. Next is 2024-193-1, Town Council letter to Planning and Zoning Commission concerning short-term rentals. Councilor McBride, would you like to read the motion?
Certainly. This whole thing?
Your prerogative.
Wow. Resolution authorizing a letter to be sent to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission to request the delay in adopting short-term rental regulations. Whereas at their February 27, 2024 Regular Committee of the Whole meeting, the Town Council discussed the need for an ordinance regulating short-term rentals, and whereas Attorney Rich Cody advised the Town Council that Francis Whibley versus Zoning Board of Appeals of the Pine Orchard Association, a case soon to be considered by the Connecticut Supreme Court, will soon be argued, and whereas the eventual decision in the Whibley case could affect both the Planning and Zoning Commission-proposed SDR regulations in any potential Town Council ordinance, and whereas Attorney Cody has previously recommended that the PCC consider waiting to adopt the SDR regulations until after the discussion is reached by the Connecticut Supreme Court in the Whibley case. And whereas the Town Council concurs with advice given by Attorney Cody, that it would be best to wait until a decision is reached in a case prior to the adoption of any regulations or ordinances now, therefore, be it resolved, if Town Council approves of sending a letter by way of Town Mayor Rachel Franco to the Town's Planning and Zoning Commission to request that they pause the adoption of any SDR regulation until both the Whibley case be resolved and the Town Council has an opportunity to decide any potential action via a town ordinance.
Second, Park.
I'll let you decide, you're second.
No, it's a tight one. I'm going to go with Parker on that.
Congratulations, Councilor Parker.
Moved by McBride, passed by Parker. All right. Do we have any comments? Councilor Boardland?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to this. I'd like to amend this to exactly what it is, but also to say, and, you know, set up a meeting.
I'll second for discussion.
With planning and zoning?
Yeah. It was stated several years ago, through the Mystic Oral School, the data centers, and many developments, that, you know, the planning and zoning has been asking to come before this body, and they have yet, have had an offer to just, you know, have the dialogue, as Mr. Cody stated, that we can have within the parameters that are allowed. I think that sends a strong message, since council is kind of directing and guiding like what we want, zoning has, you know, regulations that they have to abide by, and they have stated in that email that came back, I don't know how many years ago, a couple years ago, that it would be great to kind of know some direction, what the council's thinking, and what things are on the horizon, so that we can be a, you know, kind of collaborate in a way, and discuss the needs of the town. Other towns do this, they do it very well. It actually helps. You know, one of the things is, I never want to rush development, but at one point, I know there were folks that were like, oh, this is, you know, the process is slowing down, we, we had a separate planning and zoning, now we
We had a separate planning and zoning, now we have it all in one area, one commission. And one of the things that would help the process is opening up that floor for discussion and that dialogue so that they can come around us. And that would help us to communicate and not have to go back and forth and back and forth with development when things, you know, maybe P&amp;Z doesn't want or, you know, it is, they can kind of tell us things that when we're starting to write the RFP, things that are allowed for zoning, they can't, you know, direct us, obviously we can't direct them. But there's a lot of different ways. So I think this is just a great option to send the letter, but also extend the hand of inviting them to the table. They may take both, they may take one. We don't know. But I think it sends that unity message and I think it's time to have it as we have many properties that are going to start to go hopefully back on the tax rules. And it's just a good thing to do. So that's the reason I'm asking and because they sent us a letter asking for that opportunity. And I think this is perfect time to add it. So I think Counselor Gajewski for the letter part. I figured I'd wait until, I was going to put an amended motion on that night, but I figured I'd wait till tonight to add that to make it all one, which just looks nice and cohesive and really gets the job done on both angles. So I hope counselors will support. Thank you.
Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. Manager Burt, are you aware of any, not on my time on council, and I know I was aware of it when I was a private citizen, but has the Planning and Zoning Commission ever sent us a letter requesting to me?
They did several years ago when the first time this was looked at.
Okay.
So it's been a while.
And do you have any information, I don't know, I don't even know if you can answer this, do you have any information of why the council was protective of that?
I don't remember. Clear enough to say.
That's fine. All right. I would only support the amended motion if it was to discuss STRs. So would you be willing to amend your motion to do that? Or would you like me to make a separate amendment?
Yeah, I'm willing to amend that because I think this is the issue. If we wanted to come back in the future, we would have a request of why they were coming. So absolutely, I think that's a fair start, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll amend it to include to come out for STRs.
Because, hold on, I have the floor.
Sorry. But he has to read.
Yeah. He has to read the second.
He does.
Second. So I would, the only reason I would say STRs is because I do not want to infringe upon the Planning and Zoning Commission's jurisdiction of setting planning and zoning regulations. I do feel it is important, though, that we have a meeting because this would maybe, I don't want it to be us doing an ordinance and them doing a regulation and then them conflicting with one another. So that is why I would support a meeting. And I just, Attorney Cody said at our last, in our committee of the whole, that it was perfectly legal, so I have no reservations about it. So I'll be in favor of the amended motion. And if it's, if the amendment motion doesn't pass, I'll still pass, I'll still vote for the letter. That's it.
Any other comments? Counselor McBride?
Yeah, thank you. I'm kind of struggling with this one because I did think about the original motion and as this was discussed last time, this amended motion. And the reason I'm struggling is because I kind of think of planning and zoning and the council as two separate bodies, like church and state. So I kind of, I kind of really don't agree with both of these motions because I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to do our job, planning and zoning has fiduciary responsibility to do their job. And I don't know if the two should meet and mix in formal settings. I think we should all come up with our own, you know, I agree with collaboration, but I think there's separation between these two bodies that is important and that's why it's set up. So I don't, I'm not in favor, and I think the letter, not necessarily in favor of the letter, because I think the letter should come from the administration because they're the ones that are going to be having the real issues if they do enact some form of regulation on this matter. And I think Cody already sent a letter, so I think the work has been done. But if there needed to be any additional comments to suggest that they don't move forward until we do or vice versa, that I think should come from the administration. I don't think it's the council's prerogative. So I understand the desire for collaboration, but I don't think it's fitting in this situation. I think they have a job to do, they're the experts at that, and we have a job to do. And I think we should, we should be separate in these initiatives. Thank you.
Counselor Bordalyn for your second time.
Yep. I don't know if it's more collaboration, but they were like, if we're going to recommend an ordinance, they were going to just discuss about the parameters and the dialogue of how, what things can and what things are zoned to kind of go through. And they asked for a meeting before. So it's, to me, just, I do agree with Counselor McBride in the sense that a letter was sent, as I stated the other night, while we were here, duly, they were having a meeting, STRs were on it. And I read all the packet for that meeting for the planning and zoning a couple of days prior to our meeting because I have to watch it later since they're kind of conflicting. And they did draft a letter, Attorney Cody already sent a letter recommending that they wait for this lawsuit to come. So our letter is kind of redundant in nature because it's already been given. The other concern I do have, I don't even know if they can take a letter. They closed public comment. And once public comments are closed, the commission, when I watched the meeting, stated they had to disclose if they got another email from somebody, but they couldn't be swayed by it. If they happened to turn on the TV and heard something about short-term rentals, they'd have to disclose if that had come on. So I don't know how much more we can really actually advise at that point in relation to a letter. What meeting, we could definitely just ask questions like, okay, you know, they have a document that they're starting or they had started, we could just kind of understand and kind of go back and forth about what that looks like. So if we did draft an ordinance, we could understand kind of the dialogue and the language because we're not zoning experts. So again, the letter has already been sent by our town attorney. Is that correct, Town Manager Burt?
Yes.
Right. And that packet was up online, like I said, it was happening while we were here. So what we were asking for, we were asking for something that already had been sent. I'm fine if you guys want to send another letter. I do think it's a bit redundant, but I do think throwing out there, I'm not sure what they want to talk to us about, so I just think it's nice to say, hey, we didn't forget. And, you know, maybe they just wanted to update us on some new state zoning regulations and things to inform us as a council of what's coming down. I mean, I think it's important to extend the hand and welcome them as a body that's, you know, kind of setting the boundaries, but we have these desires of what we want and they might not fit into those boundaries. And I find that we, between data centers, oral school and many other developments, we've kind of made a lot of promises on the front end and then the back end, we find out later that if we had just asked a couple of questions, we probably wouldn't have made the promises that we did in certain ways. So that's my thought. I'm hoping to support just extending something.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Burt, when the planning and zoning asked a number of years ago for a meeting, what was, do you remember what the topic was, what they were asking about?
Well, I think what it was, if I remember correctly, what, you know, the Town Council had gotten to the public, the first time at least, the public hearing on a draft ordinance. I think one of the, I think the chair of the planning, it was either the chair or the vice chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission came to public hearing that night. And I think it was more verbal. I don't remember if there was a letter per se. I just remember suggesting that.
It was just sort of a comment he might have, he might have made at that time. When the town gave Mr. Cody's letter, they, have they sort of rejected the letter or just not? What did they do with the current letter that we, that Mr. Cody?
I could say they didn't take the, well, I shouldn't say it because they've not yet officially taken action, so I wouldn't feel comfortable saying what they were doing. God, is that, they're not likely to follow that, but I can't say for sure.
Okay. But the, it's the sense is that they're not following that letter. Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable setting up a meeting. I think it just creates an odd situation of two completely different bodies that we're legislative, they're regulatory, and we're not supposed to meet, we're supposed to stay separate. We each have our own areas that we work in. So I'm uncomfortable having here and then how it might appear, how somebody sort of takes it, that you were telling them or asking them. I think it just creates a very uncomfortable situation of mixing two bodies that aren't really supposed to be mixed. I'm a little mixed on this letter and I'm not sure if it's going to work or not, if they've already sort of rejected the previous letter or hinted that they're not going to do it, that this one will do much. But, but on the current motion on the floor, I'm not in favor of that.
Point of information.
Your point of information?
I, my question, did they reject the letter? We don't know that. Counselor Jones just said, you know, if they rejected the letter. So my question is, did they reject the letter?
Did you hear what Town Manager Burt had said?
He said he didn't know.
No, that's not what he said. He said.
I said, they haven't made a decision yet, so obviously I can't say definitively. The, from hearing from staff that were in attendance, the feeling was that they were interested in waiting, but that's just a feeling, so.
So they didn't reject the letter? Because I just wanted to make sure, I heard Counselor Jones, he said they already rejected the letter.
He corrected himself and then, and stated that it looks like the direction they're Any more comments? All right, I'm going to take mine. I also am feeling like there is sort of a separation of our regulatory and legislative bodies. I don't feel like there's a need to meet yet when we, as a body, have not even decided which direction we're going to be going in. We don't even know if we're going to have a regulation or if we're going to even take up STRs. I mean, we as the council have to decide some things first before we go into meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission to have any kind of discussion. I mean, it's just, in my perspective, it's going directionless, basically. Also, I don't think it's overstepping to send a letter to request that the council would like time to work on something. I think there is nothing wrong with that. I don't think that's overstepping and putting ourselves in a place where we may be misconstrued as advising the Planning and Zoning Commission on what they need to do. This is a request for them to just answer and say, yes, they would wait or they're going forward or hopefully they would respond to us. There is also something else I'm working on that I want to send a letter to the Planning and Zoning as well as a request for them to look at something. It is not from the council. So I don't think it's wrong to send a letter asking for something that we would like and just ask them to pause. They have received the attorney's advice. Our letter does not replace the attorney's advice. Our letter is basically just asking them to wait until the court case is finalized and give us time to have conversations and make decisions ourselves. And I think, I think that what the motion, the main motion is something that I would be supporting. I appreciate maybe wanting to have discussions with planning and zoning if we wanted to talk about generalized things in the future where there weren't pressing matters that come before both of us, that maybe we can figure out paths forward on how we can deal with some certain generalized issues. But I don't think we should do it when there are pressing matters that could be on both their plates and our plates at the same time and have potentially the community think we, one or the other are unduly influencing the others. I would not like that type of impression. So that's all I have to say. Any more comments? Counselor Gajewski for your second time.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I am going to flip on the meeting now, as you just said so eloquently, that as a council, we haven't discussed what we're doing with STRs yet. So we are going into a meeting aimlessly and I know they may have sent it years ago. Also, there's nothing that's preventing, if they're watching this, there's nothing preventing them from sending us a letter asking for a meeting regarding X. So as a council, since we haven't gotten to that point of what we're doing with STRs, I don't think, I think we're jumping too soon to do a meeting. So I will not be voting in favor of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I am inclined to agree with Counselor McBride. I think we should wait on both matters, not to send the letter. And second, my other question is for Mr. Burt. Is it Mr. Sutherland? Is P&amp;Z? Does that sound correct?
Sue Sutherland.
It was Sue Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay. So I went through my notes and it was actually November 3, 2021, on the public hearing. And she asked us to defer it, asked the new council to defer it to the commission. So I don't remember getting an actual letter. I do remember it being stated. So I do have that in my notes from, because I have a notebook with me, November 3, 2021. So as we've been discussing this for several years and no one has come up with a solid answer, I think we're all probably in waiting. And I believe waiting for the courts to decide would be the best option because one is still personal property. And I think we need to hold off on sending a letter and let the council, the commission say, hey, come, we'll come to you or vice versa. But right now, it is two separate bodies and I don't want us to overreach. Thank you.
Counselor Parker, were you at the COW when we had full discussion on this?
Last week.
Were you at the meeting? I just, my memory is a little fuzzy.
Last week?
Yes.
No, I was not.
All right. There was, there was also a discussion of the Whibley case. I just wanted to get you up to date, the Whibley case that they're talking about. They're expecting that to come through in the summer. There is, Planning and Zoning has a regulation and like written out, ready to roll. And that would conflict with legal non-conforming. And there is some issues there. And if they did theirs first, if we did not have, let's just say we were going to go registration process and they put theirs out first, it would be a major conflict of how the town would handle it. I'm not sure if you were aware of that.
Okay, but.
I'm just saying that there is, there were reasons behind, like requesting a letter to be sent to them. And it wasn't just simply so we could have our chance at biting the apple first. It was not like that type of thing. It was just, and Attorney Cody had also stated, a regulation would be much better than a planning and zoning regulation, that our ordinance, an ordinance at the Town Council would be better than theirs, than having a planning and zoning regulation. So I just wanted to get you up to speed, just so you can, if you didn't, weren't aware of it, I'm sorry. If I'm repeating something, you may already know. I'm sorry. Thank you. All right, any more comments? All right, so what we're going to vote on first is the amendment, amended motion with a meeting with planning and zoning, moved by Bordalyn and seconded by McBride. All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
That fails one to seven to zero. We are back to the main motion on the floor. And the main motion is to send a letter, as was read earlier in the motion. Counselor Rusk?
I'm just going to repeat what I said at the Committee of the Whole. I think it is very important to wait until the case is decided at the state level for our community. So the reason why I'm supporting this is in not to unduly influence planning and zoning because I truly believe that we are two separate entities and that it's very important that we don't influence them. It is just a request to hold. I'm not, that's, that's the only reason why I'm supporting this, is because I feel like we all need to wait until after the court rules.
Thank you. Counselor Bordalyn?
I'm going to abstain or vote no, I'm not going to decide it, but, because I feel the letter already went. And I think they're going to make their own decision and I don't think our letter really depicts, I mean, we say we don't want to govern over it. But I believe, after listening to the meeting, the feeling I got, again, the feeling I got, not saying they've said it, is that they're, you know, they're. not saying they said it, is that they're, you know, they're, they're on the record, and you watch the meetings, they're saying they're kind of wanting to see what comes out of this case multiple times. I hear commissioners repeat that. So, if you're up to snuff on the meeting, I just think this, to me, is a little redundant for me. So I will not be sending that, because the letter already went once and sending it again, you know, it is... And, you know, I am concerned that the town attorney is stating that, you know, one, something coming out of us would be, from us is going to be stronger as far as a rule, you know, setting parameters for STRs versus the Planning and Zoning. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't know. I don't know if I agree with that statement per se, but I'll digest it for a little bit longer. But anyway, I, I don't think we need to send a letter. And the public comment section had closed, so that was time to act a while ago.
Any further comments? All right, so I guess we're going to vote on the main motion. That was read by, oh my gosh, where is it? McBride, seconded by Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me, aye.
Abstentions?
One.
So that is four to two to one. That will...
Five to two. Five.
Six.
Oh, I'm so sorry, five to two to one. I'm sorry, for some reason. Did you, were you opposed?
I was opposed, was it six?
That's five, that's...
Counselor Parker abstained.
Four to one, we're only eight.
Five to one.
Oh, five to one, you're right.
I know, I'm on the same place you are. Five to one.
Five to one.
I'm sorry, that passes. A letter will be sent to Planning and Zoning, asking them to...
Motion to adjourn.
Point of information before...
Motion to adjourn.
There is a motion to adjourn on the floor. That is moved by Parker.
I just don't want my name on that letter, just put the counselors that wanted it.
Seconded by Jones. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Seven to one to zero. We are now adjourned.